Yep, we are ready. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Monday, April 21, City Council Work Session. We have lots of special guests here tonight, so thank you all for joining us. Let's start with roll call and then we'll jump right in.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Connolly?
Here.
Ms. Downs?
She's running late. We'll be here shortly.
Ms. Flynn?
Here.
Ms. Hiscott?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Ms. Underhill?
Here.
Mayor Hardy?
Here.
Thank you.
So today's April 21, but we are missing a milestone. April 20 was Mr. Shields' birthday, in addition to many other things that people celebrate on April 20.
Well, let's stop the meeting. Let's have cake.
Where's the cake, Flynn? I have to bring the cake. I'll bring cake to GovOps on Wednesday.
No, please don't. Thank you, though. Very nice of you, though.
Okay, we'll just have cake on Wednesday. So happy birthday. Thank you for all that you do for the organization, for the city.
Well, thank you.
Hope you had a great one.
I did, although I was dreading this meeting. But other than that, it was a great birthday. We have a good work session scheduled for tonight. We're going to kick things off with a discussion on public safety, followed that by a focus on transportation, also transportation safety, but everything we do in transportation. Then we'll have a brief update on solid waste services and then finish things up with sort of a conceptual framework for the budget reduction options that we've discussed through GovOps Committee and briefly at the last council meeting. So with the public safety budget, we do have a guest from Arlington County and we'll let our Chief of Police, who's also our Director of Public Safety, Sharom Fard, make introductions to our Arlington County guests. But we do have the Arlington County Fire Contract and one of the requests of council is to get a briefing on that contract and our relationship with Arlington County for fire and EMS services. We are in the process of working through some changes to that agreement and we're asking that council schedule consideration of authorization to execute those changes at your meeting on May 14. May 12. Thank you. And so I wanted to provide just a brief introduction of our relationship with Arlington County for fire and EMS. It is a relationship that goes back many years. We currently are operating under an agreement that was executed in 2014, but there are precedents far back into our history before that. And the agreement basically stands for a couple of principles in terms of how the costs for fire and EMS services are provided in the city. For the staffing at Station 6, the principle for a very long period of time has been that the city and the county share 50/50 the cost of the salary and benefits of the personnel at Station 6. With respect to the station itself, the general division is that the city paid for the construction of the station and handles capital expenditures associated with the station. And this county provides all the equipment for the firefighters and EMS staff and all the operational expenses for the station. Similarly, for the apparatus, the city pays for the apparatus and the county maintains the apparatus, buys the fuel, changes the oil, et cetera. And so that's the basic division in terms of costs and its work for generations. The changes that are before the city and the county right now is one to reflect the actual staffing that is at Station 6 right now. So the agreement says 33 and there are actually 39 staff members at the station. So the agreement would make that change and we would split the full cost of the 39 staff 50/50. In addition, we are a growing city and so there's been some discussion about how to cover some increased costs that are coming from calls for service in the city. And so what we are working through, the details on, but conceptually have agreed to at the staff level is with respect to ambulance fees. So currently, we're projecting $295,000 of revenues from ambulance fees for transports that originate within the city limits. And we would cap that at that $295,000 level. And in the future, revenues in excess of $295,000 would be retained by Arlington County. And that's a way that they would be compensated for some of the growth and some of the new facilities that are happening in the city. So those are the kind of the two big changes. There are other details that we're working through, but wanted to sort of first just get grounded on some of the larger sort of structural issues with the relationship. So with that, Chief Fard, if I could turn it over to you for introductions and then we'll hear from Chief Public.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. Good evening, Mayor Hardy, Vice Mayor Hiscott, and members of council. Thanks for the opportunity to present the public safety components of the fiscal year 26 proposed budget. Our department's mission is simple but critical. We protect lives, uphold constitutional values in the police department, and maintain the trust of our community. Tonight, I'm going to provide you an overview with the investments we propose to sustain, enhance, and protect public safety in the city of Falls Church. We'll start with the fire services contract and then proceed over to the police department services. As a quick overview of the proposed public safety budget for FY '26, it's approximately $13.5 million, representing a 9.66% increase over last year. The police department's share of the total public safety budget is about $11.8 million, representing a 9.24% increase over FY '25. These increases are driven in investments in personnel, technology, public safety programs, and interjurisdictional contracts, which you're about to hear, one of those. Before I do get into the police department portion of the budget, as Mr. Shields said, I want to pause and turn over the presentation to Arlington County Fire Department Chief David Pavlitz. First, a brief introduction, if I may. Chief Pavlitz and I were colleagues in the city of Alexandria and I have a lot of respect for his professionalism, for being an exceptional leader. And he has more than 25 years of experience in fire service, both serving in departments in Maryland and in Virginia. He took over the Arlington County Fire Department in 2018. They operate nine fire stations and have about 375 employees. Chief Pavlitz has been a trusted partner in keeping our city safe and I'm honored to turn the mic over to him so he can give you an overview of the fire contract.
Thank you, Chief Fard. It's good to work together again. And Mayor Hardy, members of the council, and also Mr. Shields. We really, looking back on this agreement and how we've operated together as public safety departments, we really enjoy a good working relationship between public safety, fire, police, and EMS between the city and the county. So we'd like to answer any questions you have, but trying to profile some of the emergency services between Arlington County and also the city of Falls Church. Approximately 1,000 calls for service are handled by the Falls Church Fire Department, Station 6, and also Falls Church Volunteer Fire Department. That's, the station runs about 2,000 calls, so approximately 50% of the emergency calls, year after year, are in the city. And that's been increasing since the pandemic. Took a little bit of dip in the pandemic times. All of our emergency service calls were depressed, but since 2022, '23, '24, and it looks like it's trending this way in 2025, there's just been more calls for emergency services. The majority of those are EMS calls. It's about 70%. About 25% are fire and about 5% are rescue or hazardous materials type incidents. For the workforce at Station 6, there's currently 39 firefighters, medics, and also officers assigned. In 2022, there was initiative to reduce the work week for fire first responders, trying to obtain a better work-life balance, reduce some of the traumatic exposure stresses, and also try to get people home to rest more. The traditional three platoons that we work and is common in the Northern Virginia region works 56 hours a week. So we tried to reduce that to 50 hours a week by using a Kelly Day. That's basically a 24-hour shift off every eight or nine shifts, about its once a month. We do work 365 days a week, 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. So that initiative started in about 2022, so that brought up the number from the previous agreement of 33 to 39. The station responds with a paramedic ALS-equipped engine, a medic unit, volunteer ambulance, and also a ladder truck, which provides really good coverage for the city and also good response for the county and also Fairfax County. We dispatch all, the entire Northern Virginia region dispatches the closest unit regardless of jurisdiction. So it's quite possible a Fairfax County unit can respond into the city of Falls Church if it's the closest unit. And we operate seamlessly. We have interoperable communications. So it's a pretty elegant system. We just wanted to see if we can, and that's probably the biggest change in the agreement in terms of costs, was the personnel cost. Now, the capital costs for fleet, they are just getting more expensive and also longer to build every year. We've seen, we think we broke the barrier. We have million-dollar fire engines now. That was unthinkable five or 10 years ago. They also take 36 to 48 months to build. It's just supply chain and manufacturing. So everyone, all emergency services, equipments, medical supplies, everything is just inflated. That's the times we're in and the times where we expect it are going to continue. So glad to answer any questions if you have. That was just a real quick profile, but...
Thank you. Welcome. Chief, questions for Chief Fard or Chief Pavlitz? Mr. Snyder?
Thank you very much, Chiefs. So a couple of questions to the Arlington County Fire Chief. First of all, I note that the city has grown significantly in population over the last 20 years, yet we have one station and basically the same apparatus and service. Can you give us some commentary about that? Do we have an adequate fire protection establishment here to cover the increased population? And if there are any questions, how can we best answer those questions?
Very timely. We are in the midpoint of an accreditation process using a national model. So the first phase was a strategic plan. The second phase was a community risk analysis and also a standard of cover to make sure we provide the best emergency resource deployment. And the city of Falls Church was included in that. So the analysis over the three years of data, '21 through '23, showed that the city of Falls Church, while it's growing, has adequate coverage in terms of fire and rescue and EMS service. Each one of the units were under what we would call, or what's categorized as, stress criteria, which would be utilization over 25, approximately 25% of the time. So while I'm going to say everything running out of Station 106, the Falls Church Fire Department, is in the middle or moderate zone. So there's, it can accommodate, the station can accommodate more incidents, can respond to more incidents, but also the station was well-designed and constructed. It's possible if there's additional growth or need for additional units, the station can house that. So I think the physical plant, the physical facility, would have enough space to cover any emergency services for decades to come. We will share that report also. It just went live last week, I believe. We'll share that link and it could be posted. It's a public document.
Great, thanks. That's the most fundamental question I could ask. Similar question to the Chief of Police. At this point, based upon the needs in the community, are we providing for adequate police protection?
If it's okay, can I come back to that question as soon as after the chief, Fire Chief is done? I'm going to do a quick five-minute overview of our budget and if it's okay, take that question after. Some of it, some of the questions will be addressed in my remarks.
Back to the Fire Chief. So I want to make sure I heard it right. What percentage of calls from Station 6 are in the city versus the county?
Approximately 50%, with annual, on average, annual responses in Falls Church are about 1,100 incidents a year, 1,150.
Okay. And how many calls are being responded to by Fairfax County units? Do you know?
We can pull that information. I don't have that at hand. My... I'll get the data to you. There are two stations close, relatively close, that do provide additional coverage from Fairfax County for '28 and '29.
Okay. Those are the questions I had. Thank you.
Laura?
Thank you so much, Chief, for being here this evening. Just to, so that answered my question. So the reason that we went from 33 to 39 was to achieve greater work-life balance and so that we weren't overworking the staff. So I did have a question. That's great. I just had a question about the overtime. I noticed that currently it's capped at 7%, that we won't bill more than 7% of overtime costs. And then the new agreement would say, would bump that up to 10%. So just a question, overtime, why do, is that when we might be short, y'all might be short-staffed, so someone might have to pick up extra hours. I was just curious when overtime comes into play.
I'd like to introduce Megan Carney. She's our fiscal officer.
I won't talk about the whole overtime situation. So the 7% is 7% of the salaries. It's not tied to Arlington County Fire Department's actual overtime costs. Our overtime costs actually run about $1 million a month. We cost overtime for, if we have a staffing shortage, for training, for deployments, for special events. We're running overtime costs. So the percent was some way to get at overtime without doing a difficult math calculation based on the actual overtime for the department. For FY '26, we will keep it at the 7% to make the proposal in the contract a little bit more digestible for this upcoming fiscal year and then move it to the 10%, and that's 10% of the salary costs. So it won't actually hit that overtime number, but it's to help us achieve some of the overtime expense for the station.
Thank you.
Mayor Beth?
Mr. Shields, you were mentioning $295,000 in ambulance fee revenues. I'd never thought about revenues and the fire department altogether. So can you just explain that a little further?
Sure. So it's very standard and done across all the Northern Virginia and most jurisdictions for the fire department to charge fees for transports is the most standard fee you're being charged for an ALS transport or a BLS transport. You get charged a set fee. Most of these fees will go directly to your insurance, your primary provider, your secondary provider, and then some to yourself. We do have a fee waiver process for those that meet certain income limits that can't afford to pay the fees. We also have implemented fees. We call them treat no transferred or qualified health professional fees, where we are providing care, but we're not transporting you. And our medical director would say that someone needs just diabetes medicine, I think is something he explains to us, where we can provide the care, but we're not forcing you to go to the hospital. We're not taking you to the hospital. And we never force people to go to the hospital. But, so we do charge those fees. They often go to the insurance company. We are raising those fees this year to help cover some of our increasing pharmaceutical costs and our transfer and training costs as well. So it's very standard done. Fairfax does it. Alexandria does it. They all do it.
So we bring in about $295,000 in fees per year from all users?
The city of Falls Church.
Falls Church City.
City of Falls Church does. City of Falls Church, correct. So the volunteers are paid 100% of the fees that they are charged. The city of Falls Church is also reimbursed for the fees that are charged to the city of Falls Church residents.
Can you talk a little bit about that cap? The budget projection is 295, and so it's capped for, at that level, for how long? Like if we're increasing ambulance trips, but we're capped at 295, can you just talk to that, please?
Yes. So one of our proposals to our, the Arlington County, was to increase those fees. So the Virginia Board of Pharmacy has required our fire departments in the state to produce their own EMS in our own pharmacies, which has increased the cost of our service. So one of our attempts to gain back, to cover, to cover the cost of that additional expense was to increase our ambulance fees. So that is why we're increasing our fees and capping where you are so that the additional revenue could be spent to our increasing costs.
And do you have a projection for, you know, based upon all the information you've gathered so far on your increasing costs? You know, we get projections for our healthcare fees and costs for the city. So just so we know in future years what we should be planning on additional costs. In addition to staffing, we'll need to cover those, or we can anticipate that we'll be reimbursed for those ambulance fees beyond $295,000?
Yeah, so this year, you're still hitting about that $295,000 level.
Right. So I'm thinking about the out years to cover, you know, we'll have to cover those expenses in out years.
So we cover those expenses.
Is that the question? 295 is revenue to us. I guess, I guess you flip it. It's revenue not received. It's not expenses. That's what you're saying?
Correct.
So for the city, would it be revenue?
Revenue foregone.
Right. That's what I'm trying to get at. Not, I guess, not an expense, but a revenue foregone. Follow-on question. While we're on the ambulance fees, would it make sense to have some sort of CPI escalator? In 10 years, 295 is not going to be worth very much at the current rate of inflation. That's kind of what I'm trying to get at. So thank you for articulating it better than I did.
Yeah, we can look into that and kind of build into the contracts some, like, review periods where we would kind of look at the agreement so that it's not just 10 years and then we look at it completely again. So maybe every, every two years, we kind of come back to the table.
Yeah, we, I think that would be a good practice, but we will follow up on having a CPI escalator for that 295. I think that would be a helpful discussion for us to have, just so that that concept sort of stays, you know, that value will erode over time.
Other questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm. So this agreement would be in place for 10 years?
Well, we typically do have terms for our agreements. So five is what the chief is saying. I think the last one was a five-year term with an automatic renewal. And we found it was working well, so we exercised the automatic renewal. Now there are structural changes and that's why we're working through those right now.
Got it. Thanks.
Other questions? I had two more. So I know many jurisdictions are now subject to collective bargaining agreements. Is the fire department under one as well and how far are you in that cycle?
We are getting ready to sit back at the table for the second contract. We're in the third year of the contract. We are going to be renegotiating the contract. Could be two, three, four years to be determined, but we will be probably for FY '27, have probably a new labor agreement and probably fiscal picture.
And those costs are just assumed to be ones that we'll have to, I guess, assume in, as part of the fire contract? So whatever the new compensation percentages are that you negotiate will then be baked into this agreement?
Correct.
Roughly, like, what's your anticipation, I guess, of how much that budget will grow?
Hard to say. We're getting FY '27 budget guidance that is, doesn't look so good. So we're probably in the same, but we don't know. But we're, I'm going to say the county manager has told us or set the expectation for a lot of uncertainty for this FY '26 and also FY '27. So we don't know.
And then more of a question for Wyatt. So with both the revenue and extra expenses, I guess, when we update our next run of the fiscal model, we should probably bake these new numbers into our assumptions from new development. Because we bake in operating costs of public safety and teachers and everything else that comes with growth. And so the new costs associated with fire, we should bake into the fiscal model. We update that every five years, I think.
I would just say, you know, the agreement doesn't have a growth trigger like that. And so it really is just driven by the county's costs in terms of what salary is. The Kelly Day change? The Kelly Day change was not driven by, necessarily by an increase in call volume. It was driven by a negotiated new staffing model. And so, so that's kind of as a feature of this agreement, the way that it's structured. It doesn't really have those growth triggers in it. Now, if we kind of became completely out of whack in terms of how Station Six was operating because we grew at such a faster clip than the service territory of the county part of Station Six, that might be something the county in the future will want to discuss with us, but that's not currently the case.
Okay. Other final questions or thoughts? Okay. Chief, you have the floor again.
Can we excuse our guests?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your service to our community.
Thanks again to Chief Pobletts. I want to now jump into our police department's portion of the presentation. I'll start with our administrative programs. We continue to focus those programs on transparency, accountability, and professional standards. And in FY26, we're permanently funding the professional standards manager position that we talked about last time, or was before, a year ago. Of course, this is integral to our national accreditation efforts through the Commission of Accreditation Law Enforcement Agency, commonly referred to as CLEA, a key priority for the council, the community, and as well for our department. Since my last budget report to you, we've begun the three-year accreditation assessment process, which will culminate with an independent review in about two and a half years from now, resulting in a, what I'm confident in is a accreditation award. So transitioning from that to our traffic safety programs, which I know folks want to hear about, I just want to share that the city's automated enforcement remains a strong tool for school zone and traffic safety. In 2024, the new speed cameras, the red light cameras, and the stop-arm cameras on our school buses nearly issued nearly 7,500 citations. This program is helping us reduce dangerous driving behaviors and protect vulnerable pedestrians, particularly around our schools. With respect to the city's photo red light enforcement program, last year, council requested that we evaluate the program at the two locations. Those are Broad Cherry and Broad in Hayndale. The goal of this program was to improve traffic safety by reducing red light violations and preventing crashes while freeing up law enforcement resources. The police department has completed its evaluation and believes the program has met its intended goals of reducing crashes at those two locations. However, since our contract with the vendor is about to expire next month, there's an opportunity to examine the future of this program. And given our anticipated budget shortfalls, I've recommended to the city manager that we end the photo red light enforcement program. In FY26, we will continue to focus our photo enforcement efforts with the speed camera and the school bus arm programs. In addition to using technology to supplement our traffic safety efforts, I can report that in calendar year 2024, we issue 3,331 traffic citations, which is, which reflects an 18% increase over the previous year, and it's near the pre-pandemic numbers. Aside from enforcement efforts, we review and analyze traffic crash data on a weekly basis and share the data with traffic engineers and the public. Our public education efforts around traffic safety has included implementing a child safety seat inspection program, digital and social media campaigns, and bicycle safety education engagement with various groups in the city. Finally, the police department's speed trailer should be ready for deployment next month. While traffic safety is an important priority for our community, the uniformed officers of our patrol section remain as the backbone of our daily operations, which along with our dispatchers stand ready to respond to our community's public safety needs at a moment's notice 24/7, 365 days a year. In calendar year 2024, we dedicate, our dedicated patrol officers responded to nearly 31,000 calls for service, with about a third of those calls originating from the community members, while the other two-thirds were officer-initiated activities. While the patrol budget remains steady, we are investing in making sure these frontline uniform personnel have the necessary resources. Those resources include upgrading and replacing outdated body-worn cameras and their in-car camera video systems, which aligns with the Use of Force Review Committee recommendations for the long term. As a background, the current equipment was purchased using a federal grant in fiscal year 21, and its sole source of funding since has been use of seized assets. This program is here to stay and it requires dedicated funding in the budget to ensure sustainability and built-in technology upgrades. Thanks also to your support. We're also upgrading the officers' mobile computer terminals and mounts in their vehicles so they can communicate effectively for their operations. To ensure better management of shift coverage in alignment with FLSA practices in our region, we've increased overtime funding and patrol. And additionally, we're setting aside new funding that's needed to support the presence of emergency personnel at special events, one of which we just had on Saturday with the egg hunt, but of course, the Memorial Day Watch Night, Falls Church Festival, and many more. We need to make sure we have public safety coverage. Of course, the work of our patrol officers would not be possible without the backing of our support services, team members, which includes investigations, professional development, emergency communication, and dedicated community engagement programs, which we've implemented new programs and bringing on new programs I'll talk about. In the coming fiscal year, we are focusing on delivering another session of the hugely successful Community Policing Academy that I intrused last, last year to you. We recently graduated 15 community members who spent seven weeks learning about their police department. I believe this program is immensely important to our trust-building campaign and engagement with our community. This year, on August 5th, we'll be hosting another national night out event in Cherry Hill Park. And yes, Madam Mayor, we're looking for more volunteers for the dunk tank, but all are invited. And, yes, I'm one. Don't know if my son is coming back this year, so we need volunteers. Excited to announce that for this coming fiscal year, we will be relaunching our Rape Aggression Defense Program, commonly known as RAD. That's so important to empowering women by preparing them for potentially dangerous situations. Investments in staff development is a priority, and we're enhancing the education and training of our staff and leaders. This has been a cornerstone of our professional development office since being implemented during this current fiscal year, so we can meet those new standards within the accreditation process that I spoke about and maintaining officer certifications and ensuring succession planning within the police department. Pivoting to the discussion we had for the FY25 budget around staffing in our emergency communication center, with your support, two dispatcher positions were added to help manage workload during peak hours and reduce burnout. I'm happy to report that all positions in our communication center have been filled and this year's budget continues to support these positions. So in closing out my presentation, I want to highlight our future priorities to ensure our public safety personnel are prepared and ready to address current and future challenges. I spoke to council last year about our patrol staffing and identified a need for four additional police officers to adjust shift relief factors in our current staffing models. In fiscal year 25, council approved two of those four positions and a third position was approved for our school resource officer program. In future fiscal years, a need for these two additional police officers remain still so we can ensure adequate staffing relief is placed, in place for our police department's patrol operations. To get to Councilman Snyder's question, beyond the shift relief factors, further staffing challenges exist related to growing workload demands on police services. I believe using a workload-based staffing model is the appropriate method in equating the workload resulting in the community's expectation for police services with the staffing levels required to complete that work. The first step in ensuring the staffing is aligned with workload is an independent and transparent, data-driven study. My top priority for a workload-based staffing model study is ensuring peak workload periods do not exceed minimum staffing levels and at the same time, addressing officer safety and wellness issues that exist relating to working the current 12 and a half hour shifts. As mentioned, the staffing study will be an open process with opportunity for engagement from our community. And in addition to our sworn staffing priorities, the study will evaluate our support staffing priorities related to investigations, public information, state mandated reporting, and ever-growing FOIA demands, which already require additional investments. So in closing, the FY26 budget for public safety reflects a balance between sustaining our current strong performance and investing smartly for our future challenges. We're committed to maintaining a city that's safe, welcoming, and resilient for everyone who lives, works, and visits Falls Church. I want to give you my sincere thanks to you, council and city manager, for your partnership and ongoing support for our public safety personnel. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Start over here, Justine.
First of all, thank you so much. You mentioned all the programs that you do to build trust in the community, and I think that's really been showing, whether it was the night out that you mentioned, or officers on bike, which I've been seeing around the community a lot more, or the community programs, which people have been, were raving about, and I saw the photos of the graduation. I wanted to bring up a few stats that you mentioned, one of which was an 18% increase in citations. I believe I'm saying that correctly. Is that simply because we have more, we've been dedicating more officers to patrolling? Or is that simply because you think driver behavior has changed now that people are getting back on the road after COVID?
I think it's many things, including those things outlined. Also, coming out of the pandemic nationwide, we saw a pullback on enforcement by police officers, a lot of it shaped by changes in legislation. You know, for a long time, when the police reform movements were happening in 2020 and 2021, a lot of officers felt guarded about putting themselves out there. So we're starting to come out of that. Also, I've made traffic safety, the importance of it very well-known to our officers, and my support of them to not be fearful and to get out there and be visible. We don't talk about citations with officers. We tell them, be visible, look for unsafe behaviors, and make sure you stop those, you know, behaviors and have those opportunities to interact with folks. Those are great opportunities for building trust and engagement with the community. So I'm hoping those conversations are part of, you know, reason for the increases.
You mentioned that our contract with the vendors coming up. I didn't quite catch what you said. This was for the photo red light. You were saying that we should extend it or end it?
End it.
End it, okay.
Yep. So the photo red light at the two locations, I've been there since 2011. Last year, when I came before you, this body asked me to review it and potentially if it needs to be moved. We analyzed it based on its current locations, and we don't really feel like it still needs to be there. It met its intended goals of reducing crashes. If you look at the citation numbers over the last couple of years in the budget workbook, it shows they've kind of stabilized to some levels. But the contract does expire next month. It's an opportunity to evaluate that. And talking with city manager and staff and looking at some of the fiscal challenges we have as a city coming, this is one of those things that we can cut while, and, you know, focusing on our other risk behaviors. A lot of the crashes in the city are driven by speed, distracted driving, and we'll focus on some of those risks as opposed to red light violations.
So right now, the contract with the vendor is costing us more money than we're taking in from photo violations?
That's correct.
All right. Let me see, what else? In terms of future funding priorities, you mentioned public information and FOIA coordinator. For expanding hiring and recruitment program, could you talk a little bit about what that is?
So we have program fundings related to our background investigation, our psychological When I took over, I decided to digitize our background investigation process so that it's in line with what other jurisdictions are doing. So prior to using the system, we would give an applicant a 40-page PDF document and ask them to fill it out and send it in. Most 22-year-olds and 25-year-olds aren't interested in doing that. Most systems use an online system where you can enter your system, your information as an applicant. So that system itself, and of course, just getting out there and doing recruitment. A lot of our neighboring jurisdictions spend a lot of trips to college campuses and job fairs, and all of those things require funding.
Gotcha. Is there, are officers' time involved in dealing with the PDF documents, or that's just the time spent is on the applicant's side?
Yeah, the challenge and advantage with a small agency is you wear many hats. And that's true in every jurisdiction, but our background investigators are trained officers throughout the agency. So they could be patrol officers, they could be detectives, they could be other folks that double-duty as background investigators. So they get those cases assigned to them and they do them as time allows or for overtime.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Fard. Something that you said and something that the fire chief said were similar, and I just want to make sure I'm thinking about it in the right way.
Sure.
You mentioned a workload-based staffing model that, and he also seemed to say the same thing, that he's not saying, you're not staffing based upon, this is our population, this is the hours we need, we're covering it, but you're actually looking at the calls for service and determining it based upon the workload.
Yeah, and that's a really good way, because it allows a conversation between us, you, and the community about what service requests are, right? And we get to adjust those things. If we want to go to every single call that we're called to, then we need to figure out what that is and figure out what the staffing requirements are for those. Certainly, if we don't have the ability to allocate the staffing requirements, then we can look at the police services and cut those back. So right now, the staffing model that's used in the Falls Church Police Department is referred to as a minimum manning model.
Minimum, say it again?
Minimum manning. Nope. No disrespect to the ladies in the room. That's just what it's called. And it's been that way for decades. And basically, it says you have an X amount of officers assigned to every hour of the day. Of course, as you see, the problem with that is the moment your workload peaks above what is required, if that requirement is below that staffing needs, then you have a deficit. So I think it's a good model. It's transparent and everybody can kind of see what we're doing.
And then on the photo red light, I was thinking, and then I was rethinking in my own head, having a conversation with myself, wouldn't it be nice to be able to say, this program was successful, we don't need it anymore? But I suppose as soon as you say that, then people will start running red lights again. So you can't do that. But that is one of those where we put in the new speeding program on Broad Street there. And some people are upset because they're getting tickets and you get that accusation of, well, that you're just making money off of tickets. And it'd be nice to be able to say, that's not why, here's an example of that's not why that program is in place. I don't know how you say that without giving people free range to run red lights, but.
Yeah.
And then my last question. Oh, the accreditation. Last year, when we did not fund that in the budget, you found some excess funds to be able to fund it. So this year, you're asking for a full-time position in the budget for that?
Yes. So we have a temporary policy analyst that's helping us with that process in fiscal year 25. It's a temporary position, and that position's really been helping us getting our general orders up to shape. We've put out 30 new general orders already just since November, I believe, our high liability ones, some of our administrative ones. But he is not really engaged with our accreditation process. So the policy is part of the accreditation. So the policy is part of the accreditation process, but we really need that staffing level to get that work done and be successful.
And how long will it take to do that accreditation process? Is it multi-year?
Yeah, it's three years. We've already started, so we kicked it off in November.
Okay.
And as, about two and a half years or so from now, we'll have our final test, if you will. It's constant continuing process, but in three, two and a half years to three years is when we will be accredited.
And then how long is that accreditation good for? And when do you start the next process?
Three years. Well, the process starts immediately.
Immediately. So it's an ongoing, it's not like you need somebody for three years, and then you don't need them for 10 more years. It's a continuing...
No, and that's the paradigm I'm trying to change with staff view on it. It's not a once every three years, it's a process that makes us better on a daily basis. It's just we get tested every three years.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Sure. Thank you, Chief. Couple of questions. How many citations were issued in the intersections with the red light running cameras?
I don't have that information, I can get it for you.
It would be helpful to know that.
Sure.
The second issue...
Well, can I just add, it's very difficult to tell with our RMS CAD data, because where an officer marks at, as you're probably aware, if they don't use in the actual intersection as the address and use a block number, trying to go back and research that and, you know, weed through it, may be somewhat difficult. But I'll do my best and see what I can fill out.
Yeah, in order to weigh and balance whether taking those out would have a significant safety impact, we need to know what's the, what are the violations that are being captured at those intersections. Second point I'd make is while your focus on speeding and distracted driving is right on point, the fact of the matter is anybody who drives or walks around here knows that red light running is absolutely endemic as a stop sign running. So, and I will say that all efforts to increase electronic enforcement for speed have ended up in a, running literally into a stone wall in Richmond. So there continues to be a lot of interest in that. But I really want to know what the potential safety impacts are, because I don't want to be penny wise and pound foolish. I don't, I don't want to increase, I don't want to decrease the safety of our citizens because we save a little bit in vendor fees for the red light running camera. So in order to make that, to make a rational decision, we need a lot more data, it seems to me, than I've seen so far. So I'll be very interested in what you can provide, trends as well. And are there other intersections where we might have a greater impact, and we should in essence continue the program but move them to other intersections? So I'd be interested in sort of a top-to-bottom review of the safety consequences of your I'll leave it there for right now. Thanks.
I will just add, we, based on the analysis we did of the two current locations, one thing that I found was in the history of those two intersections, at some point, no turn on red signs were added to those intersections, and the citations number dropped dramatically. So a lot of times, at an intersection in terms of red signals, red light, you know, enforcement, sometimes other measures such as that. So even, we have done some studies of other intersections, and I'll certainly get counsel that information. But what may be a first step as opposed to the photo enforcement, maybe looking at other options, just like some simple, just putting up no turn on red sign and see how that goes. But I will provide that data.
Sure, certainly support that, but I am interested not only at those intersections, but other intersections where photo red might, might have even a greater impact. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And just to add on to that, I guess before we make that call, because I have the same concerns, is while costs may outweigh the violations, is we should look at whether renegotiating with other vendors, that might be more cost competitive. I think there's more than one vendor out there that does this these days, whether that's an option, as well as looking at other intersections that may be more risky now. And I guess my third question is, is using crash data the only indicator that we have of risky behavior? I'd hate to get to a point where people are injured or get crashes, but obviously, we're trying to prevent getting to that point. So I guess I'd look to our public safety professionals to figure out, can we use data before we get to the point of actually seeing crashes and injuries and prioritize those intersections that we see risky behavior?
Yeah, there's, there's requirements within the law that we have to look at in terms of determining eligibility for new intersections. So I'll consider those and get back to you.
I have some broader questions and then some specific questions. But first of all, thanks again to you for this report and to all of your staff, and so many improvements that have been made. It's good to hear about where we have come with the staffing on the accreditation and why we need this additional support. But on staffing levels, could you talk about what, where we are? I know participating in the regional organization that we do, there are other local jurisdictions that have significant problems in staffing their police departments, and I know we've done better, but where are we today? What percent staffing level are we roughly?
So our staffing numbers in the book right now for proposed for FY26, public safety in the police department is 59.35.
No, I mean, but what are filled? Like, how many are open?
Oh, oh, oh.
That's, I can look at the numbers here, but it doesn't reflect, like, I heard that public safety officers, we currently have one, and that might have impacts on how we're doing parking enforcement or how we're addressing some of the other issues.
Sure. So I mentioned, so our emergency communications center is fully staffed. Our public safety, so we have three authorized public safety positions. Two of them are vacant, because one of them decided he wanted to become a police officer, so he's at the academy as we speak. So we have two vacancies there, we're actively doing interviews with that some today, and what's going on with the federal government, it's resulting in a lot more applicants. We have three officer position openings, and those were primarily due to a recent resignation of someone going to another federal law enforcement agency and to retirements. So, you know, typically takes about six to nine months to fill a police officer position with the background and the hiring, and there's only two academy dates. So we have three sworn position openings and two the PSA, so five altogether.
So five out of 59 roughly.
Yeah, and the rate, the rate compare, I think you mentioned other agencies. I've talked to my peers in other police departments, we're doing better than most. Most agencies nationwide are running 10% or higher vacancy rate, and our attrition rate is not bad either. So, and we're also looking at some lateral hires so that we can get them on board quicker.
Great. I love that you mentioned, or you talked about the use of force recommendations. Have we, where are we on implementing, if you were to say roughly, you know, if there are 100 recommendations, or there are 50 recommendations, we've implemented half of them? Or is there, that's something you could talk to tonight, or come back and give us a general idea?
Not in great details, but I can tell you, most of them we have implemented. We recently updated our internal affairs policy, our use of force policy. We implemented a new disciplinary actions and appeals policy, an employee intervention program policy, and these are all, by the way, on our website, open to the public. Our policy analysts, experienced law enforcement professional who is helping us with those policies, injecting those use of force review policies. And when I first got here, I met with the vice chair of the Use of Force Review Committee, and I feel like we've implemented most. The big picture stuff was use of force investigation, administrative investigations, our professional development, and staffing. The four overarching things. And pretty confident we've implemented most, some of them we're still working on.
Great. I think that's just an excellent example of where the community and staff have worked really well together in such an important thing, and it was particularly tough time. The MCT deployment, I feel like we had some delivery bumps or delays or something. Where are we, like, how many, from, you know, the product not arriving or something like that? There was some delay in getting those into the officers' vehicles?
We've received those.
Where are we on implementation?
Yeah, so they're, they're soon to be deployed. We had to update a lot of the mounts in the cars, because we had various models, there was various mounts. So most of all the vehicles have received their updated mounts. We're working with IT to update programming of each of the laptops before they get issued. So I think within the next 30 days, they should all be kind of out there and assigned.
That's fantastic. Just looking through my notes here. On the budget, we have two grants, we have federal grants and state grants. One's like $50,000, and one was a couple hundred thousand dollars. And as we've been discussing through the budget process for all federal and state grants, is there any concern that with those grants not being there for fiscal year 26?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay. The fees on the revenues, this is under total department budget, down 25. I guess it's not a huge number dollar-wise, but why, what is that reflecting versus fines and forfeitures? Which is a much larger, like, what's separated out in fees under the revenues versus, is that where our...
Are you on page 65?
I'm on page, yes. GF 65, the first line licenses, fees, and permits. I just look at the percent change, and I'm looking at a 25% decrease in revenues there. But it looks like it's offset by fines and forfeitures, which is 38% increase. Just curious, like, what, what are the difference, differences between fines, fees?
The fines are probably, I'm assuming it's running out of the photo enforcement program we recently implemented, but I'll have to get back to you, I don't have the exact answer for that.
It's not top priority by any means, I just wanted to make sure I understood it. I also wanted to mention, thanks for including the crash reports, and I know this is the police department working with our communications, we just have crime reports, and now we have crash reports, and that has been helpful to me. I am surprised that most of them are during the day. Like, I thought a lot of them would be late nights, or Friday nights, or Saturday nights when they were occurring, because you see driving while impaired, and I thought those would be paired together, but there really aren't. The majority of them are on some intersection of Broad, and they're, the bulk of them seem to be during the day. So thank you for making that public. I think that's data that's going to be helpful to continue helping us make better and better decisions on crash data.
And we did also publish our, in our last annual report, our officer professional responsibility data, both of our use of force data and internal and external complaints. Our 2024 annual report will be coming out soon, and if you'll have me, I'll come back like I did last year and do a presentation for you on it.
Great. The significant change on overtime funds, is overtime just incorporated into salaries and wages, so where we see just 9.22%, that includes an increased staff member and overtime and projected, you know, CPI, cost of living, that's all incorporated in that salaries and wages? I thought it would actually be higher.
Yeah, so the overtime is $42,000 for FLSA practices for patrol schedule, and then $36,000 for the special events.
Okay, so less of a percentage of the salaries than like the fire would be.
No, we don't do it like they do. Our, the $42,000 is strictly based on FLSA practices and our work schedule.
There was a comment on trends and issues about complete streets, and that kind of just caught my attention, because it said there's a potential for an increase in pedestrian and bicyclist injury crashes with complete streets. And I feel like the goal of complete streets, which is tied into Vision Zero, the whole purpose of it is to have decreased pedestrian and cyclist activity. So I was just wondering what you, what your perspective was on that.
What page are we on? I wonder if it's typo.
Page 71, the second bullet point on trends and issues. The city's goal of shared mobility and complete streets, there's potential for an increase in pedestrian and bicyclist injury crashes. I know we'd have more out there, but the intention of the complete streets and the Vision Zero is to be engineering and creating it with all the folks that are sitting behind you to make it even safer to walk and bike. And I was wondering why you thought, is it just a numbers game of more people will be out there, and therefore, there's an increase?
I'll get back to you on that.
Okay. And the last question for now, and thank you for your patience with me, as I look, cross off the ones that people have already asked. I'm on page 72, looking at materials, supplies, and others. Again, it just was twice as much as FY24 actual versus adopted, and I just couldn't remember why we, what is covered under materials, supplies, and others is a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Speed cameras.
Speed cameras? Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that's it. Let me just move on, and I can always come back.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you again for your leadership and service. I have, I guess, one remark, observation, comment, and then three staffing-related questions. So just to pick up where Ms. Hiscott left off on the body worn cameras and car cameras, I just wanted to commend you and the city manager for, you know, making the local investment and funding. I think that, you know, national sort of discourse and budget implications and sort of our strong showing in terms of constitutional policing. And when you did the annual report on sort of what excessive force looked like, or lack of excessive force incidents in the city, would have made it an easy time to sort of say, we don't need, you know, that investment. And so thank you, you know, for your continued commitment to kind of transparency and officer accountability to themselves and to their colleagues and to the community more generally. So just wanted to comment on that one. And then on the staffing-related questions, I remember last year, we had the conversation about the four full-time officers, and you wanted all four of them, and sort of said you'd take two on, because it would be easier to onboard, given the significant investment in sort of bringing on four officers at one time. And so I'm a little bit disappointed to see the lack of those officers in this year's budget, given that we had sort of put them over into fiscal, fiscal year 26, as far as I remembered, thinking that the commitment was there to actually staff those positions. So given what you just said about sort of being down three sworn officers, in your mind, does that mean that like the police department is down five sworn officers from where you want to be staffing-wise? Or where, where do kind of those, the three vacancies plus the two patrol spots you would ideally want sort of fit in terms of overall kind of operations with those five sworn positions, if you take them together?
So the four total officers was for four different shifts, to put one additional officer on each shift to address the shift relief factor. So the two that were authorized, we allotted those for the midnight shift, since unlike day shift, there's no other resources available if they run into trouble with a lot of calls for service volumes. So those two additional positions that we're still asking for, those are a lot of the day shifts, and we still want to add those. The three positions, I mean, I would say like end of the calendar year, towards the calendar year, we were in a different place than today, right? Because we had someone retire beginning of January, we had someone leave about three weeks ago, four weeks ago. So had those two things not happened, that would be before you in telling you, I have one vacancy. And before that, we were near fully staffed. So it's a constant effort. We try to forecast our attrition, looking ahead. So with the coming up academy class, we're running several applicants through, and I'm hoping to get those two or three positions filled. So then our focus would be to onboard the additional positions that you mentioned.
And the, and the two full-time officers that are going unfunded again, in, in terms of like the concrete effect on sort of attrition, or, you know, retention, or staffing, can you just speak to that a little bit more?
So that, just want to, maybe I'm just picking hairs, but the two positions that we got approved in FY25, in my mind, by end of the year, we were at or near filling those.
Oh, no. So I'm talking about, so you're talking about the two from fiscal year 25, but then weren't there two more that you still wanted, right? So the two that you still don't have?
Yes.
What is the effect on the department or the other officers of not having those two?
I see. Well, the effects is on our overtime budget. That's a negative effect. We over, we will be overspending our overtime budget fiscal year 25. We're using some salary savings to, you know, make up for that. Leave, the availability of leave, the availability of training. And frankly, some commanders having to go out and run calls. Sometimes that's what it takes in a small department. So those are the effects. It's not helpful. One of the most recent person I left was a supervisor on day shift. So, you know, trying to backfill all of those is a challenge. So I think, I think that's the effect.
And then two other staffing related questions. I know you were here earlier at one of our meetings talking about the behavioral health specialist. And it was at that time somewhat of a preview for budget season. And it was something that hasn't, you know, been recommended in the budget. And so in your view, kind of with the continued, what is it, the CIT training or credentialing, do you feel as though, you know, you're sufficiently staffed and trained to meet that need even without the behavioral health specialist that might have aided considerably in efforts with it, at least some interactions?
Yeah, and it's not, I, I do, and I don't think it's just my opinion. We had a study done, as you know, over a one and a half fiscal year. And that was the recommendation from the study that the call volumes that they were seeing just didn't justify a co-responder officer to be dedicated. We do have CIT, as you mentioned. We just had two other officers go through and get certified. We have our CSB contract. We have our mental health professional that works in the city. So we have a lot of resources to access if they are needed. It just, the evaluation that was done didn't justify the position at this time. It might change in the future and we'll certainly come back to you.
And then last question, when you were talking about growing workload demands and sort of needing to do a data-driven study for a workload staffing model, what, you know, what kind of is involved in that study in terms of what do you envision? Like is that an in-house study? Is that someone who you bring in? Is that accounted for in terms of the budget of any outside sort of consultant that you would need to even determine what a workload staffing model recommendation is for how the department needs to be staffed going forward?
Yeah, it's definitely a work that we don't have the expertise to do internally. So we do need to bring a consultant group to do that for us. It will look at all of our workload data. It will look at our staffing, our time and attendance data, our training data, looking at the positions, looking at the organization structure. And based on our, you know, workload, you know, determining what is the level of staffing that that equates. It's a very interactive process engagement, much like the vice mayor mentioned with the use of force review committee. It puts it all out there for the community to talk about what level of police services, law enforcement services they want. And then we can equate that into the staffing level that's needed to address that. And it's scalable. So it's, yeah, it's outside consultant and it'll be a public facing event.
And so then, so in terms of financing it then, are you looking at, like it doesn't seem like fiscal year 26 necessarily has funds, unless it does have funds somewhere for this. Is that like a fiscal year 26 unfunded as of now or something that you're looking at for fiscal year 27?
It is not funded because I don't know how much it's going to cost. So we'll figure it out. I'll work with city management and then we forgot a way to pay for it. Certainly if we don't have the means to pay for it in our budget, you know, I'll speak to the city manager. I'm sure he'll go with you guys.
Yeah, I just wanted to have a sense of like what the need might be because it seemed unfilled as of now, but important in terms of properly, appropriately planning for the department and the city's needs.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I just wanted to jump in on Aaron's comment. The, when you're talking about public transparency, there was a chart that you gave us last year about types of calls of service. And there was a mention also in the fire and rescue services about types of, that they were enumerated below and I didn't see them. But that would be helpful, I think, in that sharing with the public, here's the types of services that we're getting, here's why we staff at the level we staff, and then here's why we would talk to, you know, contractor or potential consultant about.
So that was in our annual report?
Yeah.
That was based on the UCR crime reporting structure. So that'll, that'll also be in our 2024 annual report once again. But there's a lot of work activity that's not necessarily UCR or crime related. So that work, the staffing study would encompass everything.
Actually, that's a great tie-in. It's not in the budget book and it doesn't necessarily need to be, like a reference in here to that annual report so that people can find, you know, why are we staffed at the level we're staffed at? Well, here are the number of calls of services we have and here's why. That's all I just wanted to add. Thanks.
Thank you so much, chief. So to be clear, I, I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding, your priority in terms of new position staff, it would be the one, the staff person that would help with the accreditation?
Yes.
Is that really, okay. And I know that you came to speak to the Human Services Advisory Council a little while ago and talked about, you know, that you'd had one that I guess the year before and it wasn't funded. And just for everyone to know, I know that the Human Services Advisory Council was very supportive of you, you know, receiving this position. So just wanted to make sure that was clear, that that was really, that's really your number one focus in terms of newly funded positions. And what, you know, I do agree with Mr. Snyder in terms of it is a little counterintuitive. You know, I just ran for election in the fall. And then one of the number one things I heard was about people talking about complaining about traffic and speeding and all this sort of thing, aggressive driving. So it does, I think for all of us to sort of wrap our heads around, you know, we, personally, I wouldn't mind seeing more speed cameras. I know Ms. Conley at this, on the school side, they did see a drop in people running past the school buses. You know, even though we, the schools did receive fees, they also saw a drop and people didn't repeat it. Once they, once they were rebuilt, they didn't usually do it again. You know, and that's what I'm hoping to with the speed camera that we have on broad, that hopefully we'll see that will, you know, decrease. But I think it is, you know, we've actually heard people asking, could we have a camera at the stop sign on Annandale, kind of behind this Harris Teeter? Because that's a bus stop there and there's cars that blow through that stop sign all the time and there's lots of kids, you know? So I think it's, for us, it's sort of to wrap our heads around getting rid of something that, you know, when we would, some of us would like to see more technology employed. And what, do we have any, do you have off the top of your head and what that contract, the dollar amount of that is for that?
Sure. So it's in the book for FY24 before we brought the speed cameras, which is $175,000.
Okay.
That's just our fee to the vendor for running those two intersections.
Okay.
We have about $183,000 in personnel costs related to the two part-time positions. Those are .75 positions. But those positions are responsible for all of our photo enforcement programs. So they're the ones who validate all of the violations out of this school bus harm program, the speed camera program, and also the red light camera program. So the 174, 75,000 is what, what is the cost of those two intersections for the red light cameras?
Okay. Thank you. And then just a comment, I just wanted to thank you for the police academy, I thought was terrific. You know, so much, I, I wasn't here for the conversation about use of force, but I think the more that we can reach out to the community with the police academy, I can't tell you how loved the resource officers are in the schools. I mean, I just see them as such a great way for our students to be exposed to police officers as, you know, members of the community and work. It's just, it's phenomenal. I know that we've gone years where we haven't had it for budget reasons. So I want to thank the city council for, for funding those positions because I know that's really, really valuable in the schools. And so again, just thank you for all that outreach. I think it really makes a difference.
Thank you.
So at the Budget and Finance Committee, a week and a half ago, we were just talking about positions that could be added in the city that would bring in revenue. Some, one of the ones that the treasurer's office was talking about was parking enforcement. They used to have someone who was doing collections on, so they weren't a police officer, but they were doing collections on treasury desks that hadn't been paid. But then one of the things that came up was parking officers that would be giving parking tickets. And I know that's a public safety aid operation, something that you've been struggling to fill as well.
Yep.
But is that something that if we were able to hire someone to do that, it would be a revenue generating position that would be revenue neutral?
I'd rather not get into the revenues as a police chief, but the, yeah, I, I think, obviously if you have more people out there writing tickets, that's going to produce more revenue, but.
Right. And I know we don't write tickets to produce revenue.
Yeah.
But it was, I guess it was more in the, the sense of the treasurer. But those public safety aides, so circle back to the public safety aides, are, you're low on them as well, right?
So, yeah, we, we have three positions allocated. We had three filled the last time I talked to you. One of them had to leave for medical reasons. The other one became a police officer. So the other two, we're actively in the process of filling. We had some interviews today. We're going to push some of those folks into background. It was kind of interesting seeing some of the applications that have come through. It's kind of sad also, seeing some federal employee layoffs. So that gave us some more energy to move quicker on those so that we can give some people some opportunity at the income that they've lost.
Okay. Any final questions? The benefit going last, actually most of my questions were answered. I had a bunch of staffing ones and everyone brought those up. So overall, chief, I guess I certainly appreciate how much you've taken to heart when you talk about community policing and building trust and being responsive to the community. So thank you for serving us so well on that. On the crash data, I think we talked about how it was great that you've made it more transparent and democratizing the data. I think what I'm most interested in, especially since we have public works in the audience, is the cross-functional team that looks at the data and then does something about it, right? So it's not just, hey, we're putting the data out there, but hey, based on where the data says we're having crashes and injuries, how are we going to fix the street so that it doesn't happen again? I think that's a core tenet of Vision Zero, whether we've implemented, adopted or not. And that behavior is really important. So I appreciate you leading the way on that, even if we haven't formally adopted that as a, as a city. My second question kind of has to do with what Laura says. I think all seven of us up here hear that the number one kind of community request is around enforcing bad driving behavior, whether it's speeding, red light running, stop sign running, just, you know, it's just gotten worse. And partly I think it's because as we become a more walkable city, we have more people on the streets observing that behavior. And so by nature, you're just going to have more demands for walkability and safer streets. That said, beyond kind of the headcount request, which I know is your unfunded needs, what else would you need to kind of be more responsive to those, knowing that enforcement is obviously only one tool in the toolbox?
Yeah, no, I appreciate the question. You know, if I looked at our staffing and our program goals in a tiered level, that first tier, the bottom level, that foundation is our patrol officers. It has to be, right? They're, they're 24/7 along with our dispatchers. If someone calls, they have, we have to have people to go. So to me, that's not negotiable. Everything above that, every tier above that is, I won't say optional, but it's second to patrol. So we've had some conversations about patrol staffing, the shift relief factor, the workload. So assuming those things are addressed and that foundation is solid, then I would love to have, you know, traffic safety officers out there who, they're dedicated or committed, goal is to make sure the roads are safe. And that's not just going out there and doing traffic stops and giving, you know, citations. It's doing the analysis, it's doing the public education, it's doing the outreach. Over the past year, I've done a lot of outreach with our youth around bicycle safety. And I've done that on my own time, coming in on a weekend to do that. And I love it, I enjoy it. It's not, if I didn't enjoy, I wouldn't do it. But those are the things that, you know, we can expand on and do more of, which we're a little bit limited with. So, yeah, I think we, I definitely am focused on patrol. And then beyond that is these other layers of opportunities, which also speak to the other questions about attrition. Just like anybody else, police officers would like different opportunities in their career. And they don't want to spend 25 years working patrol. They may want to become a detective, they might want to become canine. So if I have to focus, there are a lot of staffing on patrol, then those things are absent. So in a perfect world, that's what I would want, is to take care of patrol first and then do those other programs.
Okay. Any final thoughts or comments, questions for the chief? Great. And thank you for being out there Friday night, doing street closures yourself.
That was fun, too.
So, okay. Wyatt, back to the agenda on, are we ready to move to transportation?
We're going to move to transportation. And so Andy's going to come forward and other members of the team come join the tables as well. We do have a couple of slides that we want to go through, but before we get into those, we'd like to introduce our new Director of Public Works, Amanda Stout-Brain, who's joined the city last Monday. And I know that the whole team is excited to have her onboard, working very closely with Tara and with Herb, working very closely with our CPED staff, with our police. And Amanda brings a great experience, I think, to many of the things that the council's already been talking about for years, and a great perspective on how to make change happen here in the city of Falls Church, and very positive ways to improve safety, to help our business community with respect to how transportation impacts our business community, and of course, all of our community members. So Amanda, welcome. It's great to have you here.
Yes, welcome Amanda. And also thank you to Herb and Tara for stepping in so ably in the interim as well. So we appreciate that, on top of your other responsibilities.
I just want to say thank you. I have had a warm welcome last week and I'm really happy to join the team. And yeah, again, thank you to Herb and Tara for all their good work, for, for stepping up. And yeah, looking forward to working with you all. Thanks.
So Andy's going to take us through a presentation and then we'll look forward to engaging with the council and on discussion from there.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. It's good to see you all this evening. I think we've got the introductions covered, except we also have Carrie Odenino from our planning department here, from a transportation planning perspective. So hopefully we've got all, all the people that can answer any of the questions you all have. But we'll try and cover, cover some of the basics here through, through the presentation. So if it's okay, we'll go to slide three, Cindy. So we'll, we'll pick up where we were, were with you all a couple of weeks ago with the CIP. So when we talk about the evolution of the city's transportation infrastructure in the city, the game's in the CIP, right? So this year's CIP has $59 million over the six years for transportation, which is 40% of our overall CIP budget. Go ahead and the next one. And so when you look across the city at kind of where all of these projects are and what they're delivering, this is where kind of the transformational change in the city from a, a transportation infrastructure standpoint is, is happening. So some of the projects on the list here are things that are finishing up right now, like the WNO D Trail crossings, the Broad Street Hawk signals. Some are about to start construction, like the Maple and Annandale Roundabout. Some of the future projects are transportation focused, like, you know, the South Washington bus stop improvements. And then some of them are projects that weren't initially focused on transportation, but we've tried to build in some transportation improvements. One of those maybe we haven't talked a ton about, but is the Fellows Park. Big part of that project's putting in a sidewalk, right? And so I think this is where the action's at. This is a culmination of a lot of staff work and community input and engagement to get us this vision of where we're trying to go. Okay, next slide. So, so how do we, so even beyond the CIP from a transportation standpoint, how do we get all this stuff done, right? You know, you got, y'all got to hear from the police chief earlier, you know, there's, there's more, you know, other departments and things involved. But when we talk about kind of the nuts and bolts of a lot of this work, it involves the folks here, you know, both from our planning and our, and our public works departments. So. and things involved. But when we talk about kind of the nuts and bolts of a lot of this work, it involves the folks here, you know, both from our planning and our, and our Public Works departments. So kind of the resource constellation that we've got here from a planning standpoint, we have three folks in our planning department. One of those is an over hire, but we have two, essentially two permanent transportation planners. We have two engineering positions for transportation engineers. The senior transportation engineer left in October, so we've been kind of without that position for the last eight months. We've got our fingers crossed on a candidate negotiation happening now. But that's been a challenge. From an operations standpoint, we have six kind of positions that do a wide range of work, but kind of core to this group is traffic controls, striping, and signage activities. And then contracts, right? There are over 30 contracts that our team manages and support of transportation work across the city. So, so as we talk about the different programs and activities tonight, like, there's rarely anything that can be done by any one of these individual teams. It usually takes a couple, if not three, or all four of them. Next slide. So it takes a lot to keep a city running from a transportation infrastructure standpoint. You know, the resources that talked about on the previous slide need to juggle all of these programs and responsibilities. And we talked about different ways to kind of represent this, and thought like a word cloud would be, be good. Some of these have a lot of community visibility, you know, and we'll talk about a number of those tonight, you know, things like paving, NTC, missing links, also just responding to resident inquiries. And then others aren't as visible but are critically important, things like development plan reviews, grant applications, bridge and mast arm inspections, so we know when to make replacements and repairs. All that stuff's got to be managed by the folks that we were talking about on the previous slide. And as we've kind of thought about kind of where some of our limitations have been, the transportation engineering piece is kind of where we started this conversation internally about, like, how do we juggle doing all of these different things? So I just wanted to walk through that initially, so to give everyone some context as we're talking about all these things that we want to do, kind of how we get them done. Next slide. So the largest component of the Public Works budget is our infrastructure funding account. This year, we're managing a $1.5 million budget for that program and proposing to increase it to 2.2 million in FY '26. The biggest change is with paving, and we'll talk a little bit about, more about that in a minute. But the other notable changes, we're, we're planning to reduce, you know, the money spent on brick maintenance. So we'll be bringing a proposed change to streetscape standards to City Council on May 19th. So that's been an ongoing conversation. We're proposing an increase in the signal and streetlight maintenance. This includes the traffic signals, but also the decorative streetlights on commercial corridors that I think we've talked a little bit about. Pavement markings, supplies and resources to do more of this kind of, not so much new installations, but kind of redoing, kind of refreshing the pavement markings around the city. And then finally, project management and support, so setting aside some resources to help get this work done. So particularly with the engineering limitations that I was talking about earlier. So it's important to note that the FY '26 budget uses $800,000 in capital reserves to fund this work. So it's not covered in kind of our base tax collections. It is, however, kind of in the CIP before you kind of laid out to provide that funding over all six years.
Andy, can I stop you here briefly?
Yep.
For the 1.5 in this year's budget, how much of that was operating and how much was capital reserve? Because I think we also use the combination of the two.
So I think it was 800,000 this year as well.
800,000 in capital reserve and the rest of that.
So, so the FY '25 breakdown is 700 general, general fund, 800,000 capital reserves.
Be doubling operating, then. Going from 700,000 to 1.4. Like, that's the bigger headline. Because we're trying to sustain more of this in operating. That's what we've been told over time, that we need to build more of this in operating. The fact that we're, we had 700,000 FY '25, and we're bringing all the way up to 1.4 million, that's a big deal, to be able to build that into operating. Clearly, that's not the full, you know, amount that we need, but that's certainly building that capacity.
But it's based on investment revenue, so that's not necessarily sustainable money.
800,000 is, or is that?
Yeah, in my PowerPoint, I made that differentiation, because as we were going through our budget workouts, that's where we found the money. In truth, it is general fund money. So it is, it's part of the general fund. And while we, as we were building the budget, viewed it as, yeah, we're, we're paying this through investment returns, but we could view it as this is being paid for the tax dollars, and something else is being paid for with investment money. So it's, in some respects, the color of money is, judgment is applied.
Okay, sorry. Thank you for the energy.
Oh, good. Okay, next slide, Cindy. So, so paving. So, you know, we use a data-driven planning approach here in the city that's based off a pavement condition index study, which we do every three years. The next PCI work is about to get started. It'll be finished in early summer 2025. The typical scope of kind of work we're doing around the city is, you know, resurfing selected roadway sections with a two-inch mill, and then a two-inch kind of overlay of new pavement. We also update curd ramps to meet ADA regulations and address pedestrian and bike facilities where possible and in line with our plans. So the goal is to extend the pavement life and minimize long-term costs to the city. Next slide. So what are we going to do with this additional $500,000 in funding for paving? So, you know, the punchline is we're going to pave more, repaint more streets. So another, the team estimates another 1.25 lane miles of streets in the city, which is an increase over 50% from what we're planning to do this year. Additionally, you know, we're looking for improved execution. So dedicating some project management resources to be able to execute all of this work, and looking for opportunities to incorporate, you know, what they call pavement management system approaches. So doing some additional kind of studies to better kind of plan out and prioritize our investments. I think, you know, in the, in the budget book, we talked about a $1.1 million unfunded need for additional, additional paving work. So what would that get us? It's additional resurfacing and the ability add, to address more structural deficiencies as we identify them in the city. And so, so longer-term solutions, you know, the FY '26 funding levels and capital reserves that is sustained through the six-year CIP. And so, yeah, so that's where we've got with that.
May I ask you just a quick one? On that 1.1 million unfunded priority, that's just materials? That doesn't include the labor or contractors or whomever would execute on that? Or does it?
That would be all contract costs, right?
Okay, so that would be the people, the asphalt, everything. Okay, thank you.
Okay, good. All right. So next, I want to take a couple of minutes to talk about some of the capabilities and the work that the team's doing here around the city, and some of the things they've been doing to help us become more efficient and responsive to transportation infrastructure needs in the city. So road markings are a critical component of road safety, both installing new ones and refreshing the existing ones, which gets back to kind of the budget request. So our team completed 15 different projects throughout the city last year related to road markings. The ones in the photo here, so the, it's the stop bar on the left is on Birch Street, up by Birch and Broad. The middle is our recently purchased road marking equipment, which, you know, you know, Herb can tell you, but we'll make our team more efficient and effective at getting, getting some of this work done. That equipment just got here last week. So I don't even, this picture, we added into the slide deck today. And then the, it's kind of exciting. And then the picture on the right is a sight distance improvement for an intersection that we implemented at Yucatan and Lincoln. Next slide. So, so the rapid flashing beacons on North Oak Street, we've decided to have finally gotten those completed and installed. And I think as we've talked with, with you all before, you know, we had some significant lead times from the manufacturer. Part of the trick with this for our team is we had to buy both, two, a pair of them instead of just one. We had one that had failed, but we had to buy both of them because new ones don't talk to the old ones. You have to buy them so they work together. The cost of the components to, for, for this installation was $87,000. And then, as you can see, you know, with Devon, Danilo, and Jeff here in the photos, we had to do all the assembly work for, here in the city. So those poles are 12 feet high. So, so they built kind of a place in the warehouse to be able to assemble those, do all the assembling and testing in, in, in the warehouse, and then it makes the installation out on the street a lot easier. Okay, next, slide. So it's a roadside production. So we've got some in-house sign-making capability. The team's built out, you know, one of the advantages of taking back the Fairfax Water Building is we've been able to kind of repurpose some of the space. So we've got kind of a cleaned-up new sign shop in the building. And this reduces our costs and turnaround time for, for making and installing signs in the city. So the team estimates, we did roughly 100 signs in the last year. We have 25 pending project requests, and that's a project request, not a sign. So like, quite a few of those requests involve multiple signs. And so, so we have a lot of work kind of ahead of us in this department. So, you know, where does the work come from? We've got to replace aging signage around the city, community requests from the NTC program, parking, and then special projects. This team and this equipment helped us with the Saigon Boulevard sign. Next slide. In addition to new capabilities being brought on by the Smart Cities program, which we'll talk a little bit more in a minute, we've got to take care of what we have through annual maintenance and repair activities. So the team out here in the one picture is doing a signal light repair at Broad and Maple. Some of the things that Herb shared with me, that the team kind of runs across their bird nests, you know, in the traffic lights, faulty wiring, and then timing coordination with, with kind of changes and things going on in the city. So on the right, we have a test cabinet. The team has set up kind of in our workspace out at the property yard. This allows us to conduct diagnostics in a safe environment, and then test changes before you implement them in the field. You know, as we've talked about it, this is a growing body of work for us here in the city, and we look forward to be consuming more and more of our team capacity going forward. Next slide. So streetscape work. We replaced 15 decorative light poles along Broad and Washington in 2024. This one on Broad Street is across from West End Park. You know, the plans to replace additional poles in 2025. More importantly, we need to address some wiring issues that we've got with the street lights on Broad Street. And we're discussing options with the contractors this spring. If you all go down, remember going down the street during the winter with the, the holiday lights, and you drive by a couple poles, and there weren't any holiday lights on? This is why. And so, so I know the mayor's asked about kind of painting some, some of the light poles. That, that's something we need to address. There's also some structural kind of performance things that we need to address as well.
Is it big enough that it's a CIP project? Because we had some that I think had fallen, and there's some on Park Avenue that they've gotten hit. There's like four of them that are down just permanently, and so we just capped them with little cones, or really big cones. I guess are we at a point where I guess all these poles just need to be replaced because they've gotten rusty and unsafe? Or do we think painting and just changing them one at a time is sufficient?
So I think we're, I don't know, Herb, do you want to jump in? I think we, we have the team looking at it now, as far as what, what are some kind of options in the middle of maybe kind of how you've kind of laid it out there, you know? Sure, we could make it a capital project. That's another capital project for us to kind of find and fund. But Herb, do you have some thoughts?
Yes, I think one of the challenges we have, especially the ones on Park Avenue, are where, where they're placed at, and cars that keep hitting them. So because they're in the front of the sidewalk, we had actually looked at moving them to the back of the sidewalk so we wouldn't have the accidents that we've been having. So we've sort of held off on those, just to see what our best course of action would be for putting them back up. Some of the wiring in the ones on Broad Street and Washington Street, there's literally what we call conduit. There's no conduit. So some of these wires are just buried in dirt, or buried in concrete from years ago. So now what we're facing is a lot of the wiring is just old. So we have to go in with it, pull it out, or it's abandoned. And so that's some of the issues that we face with these. So it could potentially be a CIP project. However, I think one of the, the challenges we have is a, is a starting point. Because you don't want to necessarily just pick a block and say, we want to start at Broad and Washington and go to Virginia. Because we don't know which ways the, which ways the wires run. So that's one of the things that we're looking at now, to see how big this actually is. And then we'll have a better sense.
Okay. Thank you.
It's Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. So we completed two projects in 2024 on East Columbia Street and East Jefferson Street. Both the petitions for, for these projects were submitted in 2022. So the turnaround time was, you know, a little less than, you know, around two years for each. Notably, this did include a period of time where we froze work on NTC projects in support of the Greenway Downs, to allow us to focus on the Greenway Downs project. Case times on these projects can vary significantly based on consensus in the neighborhood, or lack thereof, complexity of the problem and requested solutions. We talk about light versus heavy solutions, engineering limitations, those kinds of things, and then staff workload. You know, I don't know if we need to go back to it, but I'll just reference my green chart on slide five, like, trying to kind of balance where this work fits in with all the other things we have going on. Next slide. So currently, we have seven active cases in the NTC program, and each of these are given a rating of high, medium, and low based on traffic speed and volume data. Beyond that, we have seven additional potential cases in the petition, petition data collection phase, and we expect a couple of those to shift to the active list soon. Some of the ones on those lists have been there for a long time and probably, you know, may drop off. While some of these were paused previously due to competing priorities, nothing is frozen at this point on the list, and we're looking to complete four to six of these projects in the next six months. Some of the work on, on the ones at the top of the list is actively being planned and contracted for now. To help with throughput, you know, we're looking, we'll look to leverage a portion of this proposed CIP funds for additional engineering support in FY '26. And then, you know, each of these creates new long-term maintenance requirements for the city that we have to balance. Next slide. So from a missing links standpoint, we recently completed a sidewalk on Wallace Street. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to, to check that out. The, one of the challenges on Wallace Street was, you know, the right-of-way that the city had and the cooperation of the property owners. So to be able to build a sidewalk, we ended up having to build the sidewalk in the street, which shifted us, kind of made the street too narrow to keep parking in both travel lanes. So we elected to change it to a one-way street and add a bike lane. So, so that's kind of what we ended up with for the final product there. It's, it's been a change, you know, and so it's, we're kind of working through that with the community. But I think this is, you know, provides a great pedestrian linkage in a key commercial area of the city. On Hillwood Avenue, we have four separate segments of sidewalk to be installed in 2025. The scale of this effort required engineering plans and some additional kind of erosion and sediment control and other work that we needed to do ahead of time, outreach and coordination with a lot of residents. And, and there's some topography geometric constraints that the team had to work through. And in addition, we're doing stormwater projects on Hillwood Avenue. So we've, a couple of those segments have to be timed with the stormwater project, so we don't put a sidewalk in and then tear it back up. We are proposing to increase the CIP funding for missing lakes 50% in FY '26 to $250,000. Next slide. So we're making great progress with our Smart Cities partnership with the Virginia Tech Transportation Institute. VTTI is a lot easier to say. Specific to traffic control, which is the part we're talking about tonight, there are several other components of smart cities. Our team's deployed seven new traffic control cabinets. We have 14 others that have been delivered and are pending installation. The Kits Advanced Traffic Management System dashboard is, is in the, in the graphic on your right. And I think you can see the seven dots of the cabinets that we've got in place there now. This new centralized management system will help with remote monitoring, configuration, and analysis of kind of how things are performing here in the city. Hopefully, make things a little bit easier for us. The system also includes new capabilities from MyoVision and a capability called DIRTT. The system also includes new capabilities from MyoVision and a capability called DIRK that provides smart intersection equipment that does, you know, provide some good interesting data on vehicle detection and close call, you know, near misses, I guess, safety event detection. So we will continue to evolve and grow in how these tools and capabilities are integrated into the city's operations. This ties back to the conversation with the police chief earlier. All of this is more work for us, right? And so from a smart city standpoint, we're on the, for a work session with you all on June 2nd. So we'll be be coming to that work session to share additional information on this and the other components of the Smart Cities Program. From a budgeting standpoint, it's important to note the the grant setup to kind of provides VTTI support to the city, which has been immensely helpful from an engineering and kind of setup standpoint for the city through FY28 via the grant. And then to maintain things kind of after that is something that we'll need to continue to work on a solution for. Next slide. So just kind of the takeaways. So the CIP project portfolios, where we're going to see some noticeable impacts in walkability in the city. We've got additional resources proposed to maintain existing assets. So $700,000 increase in the general fund for paving and contract engineering support, long-term solution for the capital reserves portion of the program. Our incremental improvement programs will sustain or grow. And I made a correction on this slide from what you all got like last week. Neighborhood traffic calming is staying at 200, not 250. That was my error. But the Missing Links sidewalks is, you know, we're intending to grow 50%. These programs were challenged by staff capacity constraints. And to solve that, we're going to look to leverage the CIP funds for consultant help when we need it. And then both additional, both efforts create additional infrastructure in the city to take care of and and will, you know, increase the demands kind of on the team long term. And then finally, smart cities prevent some opportunities and challenges, you know. We'll be looking, you know, be working through a long-term kind of way to sustain those capabilities as the grant support concludes in FY28. So FY26 will present some challenges for us, but I think the team's also all positioned to deliver some notable progress. So with that, happy to take any questions and turn them over to the esteemed team here to answer for you this evening. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I'm sure we all have questions. I'll just start over here and we'll go around again.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Thank you to Herb and all the work that you guys have been doing. Public Works has some of the most visible projects in the city, and I've been told multiple times from people who have lived here but went away for a little bit and then came back to visit over spring break or whatever else. They said, wow, there is so much that's changed in the city. There's so much that's gotten done. It looks really beautiful. People were really impressed with the WNOD crossings, although I know that there's been some minor issues there. But all the rapid response teamwork, all the paving work, it's really phenomenal what you guys have been able to do. So with that, my first question is about the paving. So last year, we needed $1.8 million additional investment per year to get our paving on track. Now we need $1.1 million. But if we go back to the slide on page eight, it shows that rapid drop off in terms of if you don't do paving, this is how much more it costs. And it's a lot, you know, it goes from five million to, I think it was like fifteen or 20 million or some something astronomical. Given that we're not investing the full amount, so we're not, we still have $1.1 million that we need to invest every year, is that number that we need to invest going to grow exponentially if we don't put that money in soon? I don't know who can answer that.
So I think that that's a question that we'll be able to answer next year once we start to engage with the pavement management consultants. And that's really why we carved out some money this year to get the experts on board to take a look at our whole network holistically and start to give us some recommendations in terms of what the next five years, 10 years would need to look like and and how that will all kind of play out. I think Andy mentioned it earlier that we're collecting new PCI data. It's actually going to start in May. So we're going to have a brand new dataset, and now is really the time to get the pavement management experts on board and look at everything with that new dataset and have some more information.
Okay, so so hopefully soon we'll have a better perspective as to whether or not $1.1 million is additional would be enough or maybe we need to do even more or maybe maybe not as much.
Right, that's correct.
Okay. And then in terms of, I saw in the GF92, it mentions cost overruns. Funding has increased in the cost center by $200,000 to allow the city to outsource project management and other transportation services. Is that something we're seeing these sort of cost overruns across the board right now in terms of our projects going through DPW?
So so the, on GF92, the 200,000 that is called out there is the same 200,000 up there for project management and support. So it's intended to be, you know, I think we've historically struggled with like we've, we feel like we've got a limited amount of money. We want to spend that money on doing stuff. We want, we want pave, we want to put in sidewalks. And I think what, you know, Tara and Herb and I have kind of talked a bunch about over the last six months is it's, money doesn't do you any good if you don't have the people to actually help you get it done. And and so so we've deliberately tried to say, hey, we need to set aside some resources to be able to help make sure, you know, overseeing all this pavement work in the city is is a bunch of work. So we need to make sure we've got the capacity to do that for NTC projects for all of those things, right? And and so that's what that money's for. Does that, does that answer your question?
That makes sense. So that's not a, that's not an overrun or anything like that. That's just simply hiring more project managers to take on some of the work.
Using consultant help.
Consultant work, excuse me, yes, okay, that makes sense. And then I'm curious about vacancies right now. So we had the question to the police chief about how many people were on staff versus how many vacancies. Could you run through that for DPW?
So I think of, as of today, we have, I think, we have ten vacancies in Public Works.
Okay.
And that includes some positions that we've identified, some folks to hire. I think we were down from sixteen or something, maybe before before the end of the calendar year. So with Amanda starting last week, we've had, we had two two new Public Works folks start today. So we're chipping away at it. I think Tara and Herb have done a great job, you know, trying to focus on on, you know, carving out the time to be able to kind of interview and and bring folks in. So we're by no means there, but I think we're trending in a good direction.
Are we seeing more applicants now, like I guess the police chief mentioned in his department? Yeah.
On the engineering side, yes. So we, our applicant pools have grown kind of similar to Chief Fard's comments, and we have more qualified people coming in.
Wonderful, okay, that's great to hear. I am curious about the rapid response team. Is that fully staffed? And are they fully, do they have a full slate of projects that they're working on?
So we're down one maintenance worker in rapid response. They have a full slate. What's sort of happening with rapid response is it's it's taken on a sort of a brain of its own. It started out as just three people, and we've now moved it to six people. And so we have traffic, we have signs, and we have pavement markings. And so now you basically have three different sections right now because everything is growing exponentially in the city. So I expect the traffic department to need to grow more in the future and break these things out even more. Because we have one person doing signs and markings, and really that should be two separate type of jobs. And we have one person doing traffic in our streetlights. And all of these things should be broken out separately. So the same person that's fixing your lights are the same person that's putting up street poles. The same person that's doing your delineators in your stop bars are the same, is the same team that is making your stop signs or signs for chief or any of those things. And so it's sort of the picking the priorities, and so they have a full slate to answer your question.
That's, that's good to hear. Yeah, I was wondering what, well, when we look at the community survey, the number one thing on that list was walkability and bikability. And so the rapid response team is one of the visible ways that we get to towards that goal. But something else that I was thinking about from a council perspective is, you know, if we're interested in doing things and not having to wait five years to get a bike lane or, you know, several years to go through a traffic calming, are there opportunities where we could have some sort of temporary investment where it's maybe a temporary speed bump to see if that works in that location? Or maybe it's terrible, or maybe a temporary bike lane or trying things out? And so the rapid response would be a great way to do that, but I guess we would need to have the staffing beyond what we already have. It sounds like they already have a full slate.
Correct. And some of those things are, some of those things that you have mentioned, we have talked about. And it's, there are opportunities, because we deal with so many from internal to external stakeholders, right? So I think it's, there's excellent times and excellent opportunities to do that. It's just the resources, right? We don't, we not necessarily want to say no, but there's only so many hours in a day, there's so many days in a week.
I totally understand. Let's see what else. Something that was in this document last year was an ask for a communications person for DPW. I don't know if you remember that, but I did not notice that in here this year. Is there no longer a need for a communications person? Because I remember that being something that Zach had talked about, not being able to have the time to do all the explanation to the public or post on the website all the updates or have a clear picture of like what was going on in DPW, especially when the public was was constantly asking what's happening with this NTC program or what's happening with whatever else is going on.
So I'll jump in just to note that in the communications budget, last year, the council sort of halfway funded position for website upgrades. And we've transitioned that into a website manager that will help, I think, the entire city organization keep her website up to date, keep it crisp, concise, informative. And so that's a, that is one additional resource that will be helpful to all of our city departments.
Gotcha.
So it doesn't probably get us all all the way, I think, what was probably what Zach's vision was, and Tara's probably nodding her head in terms of what's needed, but it's a step forward.
Okay, yeah, I think something that, as somebody that's interfacing with the public a lot is is being able to have some sort of clear communication. And so that's, especially in terms of what projects are going on or what projects are coming up or how much longer they have to wait for their NTC project to come forward or just even getting perspective. I think actually that list of the NTC projects of low and high priority ones, because a lot of people said, well, I submitted this project a year ago. Why haven't we seen anything? Well, it often takes a long time for these projects to go through the process, and your street is not the only street that maybe needs it. The other, my final point, oh, two, one more thing, actually, two more things. The Public Facilities Manual, what would that get us or what's the importance of that?
So the Public Facilities Manual is really important for the city. Where all of the local jurisdictions that surround us have one. It would give us something that would standardize what we do and why we do it. So when you look at streetlights, there'd be a specific way with a standard that calls out exactly what it is, how it's installed. It's something that you can hand over to the contractor and ensure consistency for all of your infrastructure that's built. Right now, we lean quite heavily on Arlington County and Fairfax County for their standards. And so we borrow bits and pieces from their Public Facilities Manual, and then as a backup, we utilize VDOT. But having our own would give us that city brand and exactly what it is that we want our city to look like. It's a step above and beyond the streetscape standards, which do that, but they don't do it on a level that a contractor would need to actually implement the infrastructure, if that makes sense.
That does make sense. And then my final just note is I appreciate, you know, as we're going through NTC projects or other things like that, getting the most bang for our buck, so making sure that we're putting our our money where it's most important. So looking, working with the police department, looking at where there's incidents, but maybe not even incidents, but near misses or other things like that to actually use our dollars in those places rather than, you know, maybe you have some people who are very upset about one area, but we're seeing a lot more near misses in another area. That's where I'd like to see a lot more of the rapid response and and other quick turnaround moves so that we can actually hopefully start to see a difference a little sooner than several years out. Anyway, thank you guys for the work that you're doing. I really appreciate it, and that's all.
Thank you for all those questions. I just have one question, and it relates to sidewalks. One of the things that is on the work plan is to look at our streetscape standards and hopefully, in my mind, hopefully, other mind possibly, move away from brick sidewalks to concrete sidewalks. Is that reflected in your budget? Or is that something that may or may not happen, so it's not actually in the budget yet?
So to what we've proposed in, so this is kind of like a spend plan, right? So is what I would call it. So we've got a bucket of money and kind of across all of our different programs, this is how we would, you know, look into next year, how we would propose to spend it. So we're proposing to not spend as much as we have historically on brick sidewalk and crosswalk maintenance. Because I think for future installations, we're going to shift to something else. That's what we're going to come talk to you all about in May and and get your feedback on. So that's how it'll show up in this budget. I think the other piece is the project costs for our CIP projects will be reduced, right? And so it isn't mind-blowingly less expensive from from an analysis, I think the team did last week, but it is less expensive. It should should save us money and make some of our projects more affordable.
Thank you. One follow-up to my one question, which is, as we contemplate that, and again, we'll talk about it more in May, with, the maintenance is still the maintenance of the existing sidewalks. So an existing brick sidewalk, last year, we did several crosswalks, redid them, and then we put in the WNOD crosswalks as well. So those are still going to have to be maintained as brick. We're not contemplating referring back to concrete, right? Maybe this is from the May conversation. So the, I'm just the maintenance, one of the things, one of the reasons we want to change is because brick sidewalks cost that much more money to maintain, but the existing ones are still going to have to be maintained.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, you know, and we haven't talked through, I think, and so I'm kind of just speaking off the cuff here, right? But but I think it'll be situationally dependent. We might want to think about if we need to completely overhaul a brick crosswalk, we might want to think about trading that out, right?
Right.
Versus making repairs to a sidewalk on one of our commercial corridors. It'd probably make more sense to repair it, but, you know, I think it would be situationally dependent.
Okay, great, thank you.
It seems to me the bottom line with with the transportation areas, we need to find a way to get more money into it, not less. So whether it's paving or it's sidewalks or it's lighting or signals, we're just not funding this at a level that it has to be funded at that our citizens want. So I think our collective challenge is both short term and long term, how we can invest more into this area. I think one area of efficiency would be to take a serious look at the the Neighborhood Traffic Calming effort. It takes a lot of staff time, and can that be streamlined? Can we do more projects without going through that process? So that would be one area of efficiency. But I I think the the issue here is simply that we're not meeting our citizens' expectations in this area, despite good efforts on the part of staff, which I fully respect and appreciate. The other frustrating thing is that a lot of the state programs are geared toward capital. They're not geared towards small projects of the kind that we do. It's an issue that I have raised and I'll keep raising, but it's maybe an area for for legislative work to make it easier to get the kind of money that we need and that frankly, many municipalities our size need. You can build a Mammoth Highway project, and it seems easier to get that than it is to do a few sidewalks. So again, it's an issue I raise, and I'm going to keep raising it. But within our immediate control, this is an area where as we, as we look at where we're going to end up with a budget, this is not an area where where we can provide less than we're doing. It seems to be an area where we're going to need to do more, that it really serves all of our citizens, regardless of your income. That it really serves all of our citizens, regardless of your income level, and supports our commercial activities here. So those, that's my comment, looking forward to final decisions on the budget. We need more money in paving, we need more money in sidewalks, and we need to make sure that we're staffed up so that we can actually use the money that we're, we're allocated as, as quickly as we can do responsibly.
Thanks, most of my questions have been answered or asked and answered already. But I did want to point out, in the police report, there was also discussion about the quality of the road beds and its implications for safety as well, not just intersections and lighting and timing, but the actual quality of the roads. And so I think we need to, to your point, Dave, consider that as a part of a totality. I like that slide that's showing how all of these departments are interoperable and overlap with intent and purpose. And I think that we need to continue to focus on, not only is it just for pet and bike safety, but it's for car safety and the data that's going to be provided on the Broad Street Corps through that VTTI, I think should hopefully be providing additional insight and information as to where those, those problems occur. So I'm really excited to see how you all work together. And again, thanks to Herb and Tara and to the police department for doing a lot of the work and to you for all the engineering that's happening as well. On the VTTI, I know that has been a huge grant and you all have all worked on that. Cindy spearheaded a lot of this discussion. I do think in terms of where funding could be, hopefully continuing in the grant cycle is on a project that's been invested in so heavily by the state that there could be some grant money to ensure its continuation and its success and that we're implementing it, whether that's training dollars or to make sure that our staff knows how to use everything to its best effect or how to analyze the data as they suggest. And so my only comment is that, I'm sure you're already thinking of it and, but, that that might be where we can actually have some dollars that aren't necessarily just assigned to the asphalt on the street, but the technology that will help move those things forward. Because the state as an over, you know, overarching state through VTTI is investing heavily in us and wants it to succeed as well. So that's my only overarching comment. And then a very specific comment that came from my ESC crew last week on missing link sidewalk was regarding the Roberts Park sidewalk. You know, there's that one link that's on our list in terms of priorities. And there's been discussion like, oh, that's a dead end. It doesn't go to anywhere, that's not a priority. Well, it actually is a really big priority to that neighborhood. It is the only entrance to Roberts Park. It's the only park that you can, you know, you have to go, even if you live on the backside of Roberts Park, you have to go all the way around, pardon me, all the way around the block to come to that one entrance. So just ensuring the last, you know, quarter, it's almost like a half a block of sidewalk that may seem not impactful because it's a dead end, but it really is impactful because it's dead ending into a park. And those folks feel like, you know, that's their only, their entrance. Pardon?
I was just thinking, there's not actually any sidewalk on Randolph at all on either side. So it's that one little thing, but then the big street. The entire street has no sidewalk.
Right.
Yeah.
So I know that's very specific, but I wanted to communicate that from the ESC crew. Thank you very much.
I'll just, I'll echo the comments on appreciation for staff, recognizing sort of all the changes and the different vacancies and just sort of moving pieces all the time for this department. In particular, people having to step into different roles and sort of not only be in different roles, but just have like two hats and dual functions or triple functions. And so thank you all for that work. I will say that there's, I think, you know, when we look at like the community survey and, and sort of see, you know, the comments about street conditions or transportation infrastructure, resident safety, like it feels sometimes like these conversations, like that this was the conversation we were having last year about rightsizing DPW in terms of engineering versus planning versus implementation, like staff, the people who are there on the ground on the rapid response team and like actually seeing the visible change in a street, whether it's with the, you know, flexi posts or with the pavement marking. And so I guess I'm still like hoping that we can try to like find that in the right way because I feel like, I was hoping last year that the, you know, that the throughput would feel different this year. And even though there are like very big things we've seen changes in, it's sort of like, are we still getting this or organized in a right, the right way? So that we're like successful next year? And so I guess I was wondering a little bit about like the $200,000 project management support. Like, do you feel like that support, well, I guess, A, I have a question. Like on one of the slides, it sort of said to help address staffing capacity through CIP funds. Is that different than this 200,000 or that's this 200,000?
It's different.
Okay, and so can you talk about kind of those two pieces? So just kind of?
Sure, so so we have a set of resources that are helping with CIP projects. We talked with you all a bunch last year about adding some project managers. We've had some challenges with hiring. We have an additional transportation PM on board that's helping kind of with the transport, all the transportation CIP projects we have. So we've had some success there and we're really close on the sanitary sewer engineer PM. And then the third one is the facilities PM. That we just went through a round of interviews and didn't find the right candidate. So we're having to kind of start that again. So that was kind of the focus last year, I think. And that helps for CIP projects and kind of that workload. I think the things we're talking about here tonight are, so this $200,000 is really intended to help this body of work, the 2.0, you know, $2 million. Managing all this pavement work is like that project. And historically, we've wanted our transportation engineer, who's the same person doing NTC meetings and, you know, the whole constellation that we had on the earlier slide. And so this is intended to help with some of those things. I think the other thing I was referring to is, so in the, in the CIP, we have $200,000 annually for NTC and, and we're proposing $250,000 for missing link sidewalks. So rather than, you know, to help kind of grease the skids with that work is to take a portion of that amount of money, if, you know, kind of we need it, to help with some project management support to move some of that work forward.
And so, okay, so that helps me understand a little bit more. In terms of the, if you feel as though you have the project man- so, so there's always kind of like the question in my mind, because sometimes you say, don't give us more money because we don't have the capacity to take on more projects because we have so many things that we're doing, right? And then there's the, the project managers can only do so much if we don't have the staff to actually, right? Not have the same person doing the, putting up the post and dealing with the signal repair or putting, like making the stop sign and doing the pavement marking, right? So I guess when I'm looking at this 200,000, I'm trying to figure out, if you have this person, do you feel like the throughput for rapid response team or for, you know, missing links or for neighborhood traffic calming, that, that is helped? Or is there still the issue in terms of like not having staff capacity to be able to get this done, even if you have someone who can better direct traffic on the, like, we need people here to do these things? So I'm still look, I'm like trying to figure out, will the $200,000 help with the community like perception of, is this actually improving? Is this getting better? And I have like a longer term concern about, you know, the $30 million that we're going to have to put out for like referendum for the property yard, right? And wanting to make sure that DPW is well positioned in these like years leading up to that, where the community is like, oh, great, I've been seeing all these improvements. Yes, I want to get behind a $30 million investment in this team rather than like a frustration that's growing on, I'm not seeing this happen. So why are we investing $30 million more in something, right? So like, I think strategically, I'm just trying to figure out where some of this is helping you both kind of with the community perception of, is, is enough happening on street conditions and traffic infrastructure and like safety? And then the like, are, are we actually staffed in a way with even this additional person to get these projects done?
So, so I think it's a step in the right direction. Will I, can I sit here and say, everything that the community wants and is expecting, we're going to be able to deliver with this? I think, I think it's, I mean, you know, council member Underhill had several ideas in her questions, right? Like, that's been the challenge with some of this program is, you know, we've got a couple residents that email somebody on the staff every week with something that requires a bunch of time to engage with. And we want to do that, but, you know, I think, so I think we're going to make more progress with what we've talked about. I wouldn't even, I wouldn't think about it so much as this is a person. It's more, you know, we're, we're trying to tap into, to, you know, companies that have a suite of people that can help us with some of these things. And so, so kind of shifting away from, I need, I need a person kind of here five days a week in, in the office. That person might be good at one thing and not other things. And having some of this financial resources and consultant contracts can help us with some of that.
And I guess that, you know, like I trust that you've thought through all of these things. It's just in this, in this budget, like it sort of feels like we have to ask the questions. And I look at like $200,000 in project management support and I have the same questions on like, well, the rapid response team seems to be really successful. And people go, wow, like, that's great. Like, those are great projects that we get tangible results from and we feel safer because of. And so like, does it make sense to have the $200,000 going into project management for like NTC and missing links, where you might not see as much? Because they have taken longer, the missing links are sort of disjointed, right? Like, because they are such small segments versus like, could you do more with $200,000 in the rapid response team?
Yeah, so part of the $200,000 would be helping the rapid response team. So whenever we have something that we need to do from pavement marking perspective or flexi posts or whatever, we're going to have to lay that out from an engineering perspective. And so sometimes that's hiring the engineer to help us lay that out if we're at capacity with NTC, annual paving, missing links, whatever other programs that we're running. It's hiring that additional help to take on that task so that we can keep moving forward. So it's also annual paving, rapid response. Pretty much any program that falls under the infrastructure, being able to tap into a consultant resource when we don't have the capacity so that things don't fall significantly behind.
Oftentimes, it isn't that we don't have somebody on Herb's team to go out and put the striping on the street. The other pieces in the constellation haven't had the capacity to do the upfront work that's needed for them to be able to go out and do that work. And so talk about it being project management, it could be engineering support, but it's, you know, it's trying to balance all of that out so things do get through the system better. And, and I think what we're proposing is this, well, it's not anything and everything everybody would ever want. It is some additional capacity that should help, 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 you know, get more things done kind of across the board. Some of the reasons NTC and missing links take a while is we haven't had enough capacity to work on it. It's definitely the case on the missing link side of things, right? And so we're trying to position ourselves by focusing on vacancies and getting those positions filled. And then trying to leverage some additional, being more open about the money we've allocated for some of these programs to be able to use it, for some staff support to be able to help actually get it done.
And then I guess my last question, maybe it's also echoing Dave's comment on NTC. You know, I do have some concern, right, for how resource intensive it is and also how it sort of, does sort of invite like the serial emailers, right, to constantly engage with staff in a way that might not always be like the most efficient use of your time. And looking at sort of the duration of these projects, I know that you reviewed sort of the NTC process, I don't remember, within the last year or two. I don't think I was part of it yet. No, I think it was when that, the last couple of years you looked at, yeah. Yeah, I think it was 2023 because I was probably paying attention, but not yet part of the conversation. But I, but I do have this concern that it feels like, at least with some of this, that maybe the ground up process isn't working as well as a like, we need to do just to top down. Like, these are places that need help, need, you know, better safety considerations or based better quicker safety improvements. And so I would almost like to see like rapid response team and neighborhood traffic calming melding in a way that's less like actually neighborhood process driven and petition driven and survey like, you know, who wants what where? And we can't do anything because someone's like the holdout to actually saying, where do we need these improvements based on the data that we're seeing? And can we, you know, please go do this? And if it's in the right of way, like, we're just going to do it.
It's like a parallel like Vision Zero team, right? You have your data, that's where you have crashes and injuries, and then that drives the work. Same set of resources that goes and does NTC, but, you know, maybe don't invest as much in NTC if it just gets bogged up in the neighborhoods.
No, thanks.
I'll actually, and thank you all for being here. And Amanda, welcome. I'm sure you've only been in a, in a whole week and you're already here in front of City Council. But sort of piggybacking on Ms. Flynn's comments. So one thing that I wanted to know, when we look at the neighborhood traffic and calming, to me, there's also a connection with the missing link. So I'll give you an example. I, I live on Midvale, which is a block from Nolan. So Nolan is a missing link street, and they're also in the, the traffic calming process is up here. So do we ever look at the fact that, you know, and here it's like a medium priority? But to me, there's a bus stop on that street and there's also no sidewalk. And so do, the fact that some of these areas may not have sidewalks, I know the mayor and I have been recently hearing from some Great Falls residents too. You know, and so does that ever bump up the priority if, if some of these don't have sidewalks? Do we ever look at those two, like connect those two?
As an evaluation criteria for the neighborhood traffic calming request?
Yes. I mean, I guess in terms of the priority, you know? So like, I guess my point is that if it's, Ms. Hiscoc was talking about the one, you know, if it's something that's maybe not, you know, not as, again, some of these have sidewalks. Using the Nolan example, there's a bus stop, there's no sidewalk, and it's a huge cut through to get to, people used to get to Broad. So that's all I was wondering is if, if some of these don't have sidewalks, does that bump it up in terms of priority?
And it's so wide that it actually could be in the street probably and still have. I mean, you're the engineer, but as opposed to Wallace Street where it, we actually want Nolan narrowed. I think that's the point of the NTC requests and speed bumps and narrowing of it because it's a cut through, just to augment your point.
Yeah, I mean, the, the CACT does look at, at other factors, like pedestrian generators and, you know, other safety factors, you know, nearby when it prioritizes cases.
Okay. Okay, great. And then I did have a question about the smart cities. So that you had said there's still 14 cabinets that need to, this pending installation, is that right?
It's correct.
And what, what would the timeframe, is that like years out then or?
Cindy, is that for Tara?
We'll have a full briefing in June for you, but by the end of summer, early fall, all the signals will be in. Yeah, so.
Great.
Then it's the training, the maintenance, the data, streetlights and parking, the other components.
Okay, great. 14 sounded alike a lot, so I didn't mean to sound pessimistic, but.
I think a lot of it is just getting the equipment lead time and then some of the programming and testing. And then MOT when we have to do an intersection work.
Okay, great, thank you. I guess that's it for me, thanks.
Okay, so I guess I get to wrap up. So obviously, this is an area that council cares a lot about because it is kind of the number one community priority. And I think this is also a community that has high expectations of what their public works infrastructure looks like. So thank you for kind of meeting that challenge head on. I have a couple like observations, a specific, a few specific comments, and then some broad kind of like themes that we've talked about several times and I think other council members have touched on. So one, can we go back to the slide that showed the CIP projects that we've got? I think it was one of your early slides, Andy. When I stared at that and tried to add up the money involved, it's a lot of money. Like, it takes a lot of time and money to evolve what we are, which is the 1940s car-oriented- Like, it takes a lot of time and money to evolve what we are, which is a 1940s car-oriented city, into this multimodal city. And I think we need to have appreciation of how difficult that is to evolve a city. Uh, we have a lot going for us. We're compact. And so we're already naturally more walkable. We've added a lot of economic development where you have destinations to walk to. But it really takes time to make it easier and safer to walk. Like, we just have streets that don't have sidewalks. And when you leave Falls Church and actually compare and contrast what the rest of Northern Virginia is like, we have a lot of good going for us. And so I want to start with that because oftentimes we're near the middle of it and you hear from all the community requests of, we're not doing this enough, we're not doing that enough. And you actually compare and contrast what the rest of the region looks like. That is, again, a 1940s car-oriented suburb, like, it takes time to get there. So one, I just wanted to share that observation. Uh, it was mostly because, fair fact, city, city council came and walked with us two or three weeks ago. Uh, they walked most of the city with me, uh, on the WMD and on Broad Street. And they are a pretty small city. They're about twice the size we are. But their main observation was like, wow, you guys have done a lot. Uh, and so I thought that was a nice accolade coming from a peer locality that the investments we have made in the past, you know, five, 10 years and then coming up in the next few years are a big deal. They don't feel like enough when you're living in the moment, you still want more done. But I wanted to share my appreciation that when you take the big picture perspective, it does take time to get there. Second, which is something I mentioned when the chief was here already, um, as we get that mode shift, you have more people on the streets, naturally, we're going to get more demands for walking infrastructure. So the, the feeling that we hear from our residents and our constituents that we need to do more is only going to increase. It doesn't mean that we're not doing a good job. Clearly, there's still, you know, high expectations. But naturally, as you get more people on the streets, they're going to demand better infrastructure. That's just naturally how it's going to go. So that's kind of the second, second observation. Um, in terms of specifics, um, I think Laura asked about this. So when we get to early fall of smart cities, does that mean we can start using the data for those 14 intersections? Or do we still need to do other things?
You want to speak to any of the, the technical piece? And I know we have training and a lot more details.
Well, and I, I think we're still working through data protocols and what that will look like. Um, so it's something that's in progress that we're working on with VTTI. But we can have more information in the near future as to what that would look like.
I'd say maybe like a top five thing I hear is about signal timing. Like, people get caught in between like a red light and then they'll get a green and they get a red again. And that causes frustration when people aren't on Broad Street. And I think just getting flow, you know, traffic to flow better could actually go along the ways and actually making it safer for pedestrians because they're not dealing with upset drivers too.
Yes, and once all of the cabinets are installed and the central system is live, one of the first things that they're going to do with the grant is do signal optimization. So they're going to be taking a look at the timing and making adjustments to make everything run more smoothly through the city.
And we think end of year 2026, like, when will we actually get to timing our signals on Broad Street?
Fall of this.
Okay, so people will feel differently hopefully by the fall, or at least see the signals synced up better.
Yeah, as of right now, we think that'll happen by the fall. And, um, we have tasked them with putting on that pedestrian hat. So as they're looking at traffic signal optimization, they are also going to be looking at it from a walkability perspective and what can we do on these corridors to keep things moving smoothly, but also increase the safety from a walkability perspective, from a pedestrian perspective.
Yeah, I know one of the cool features, like, if you can detect a pedestrian, like, not having someone actually push the beg button. Like, we've all been fans of actually just having automatic walk signals. And that would be a nice improvement, especially our, you know, busier corridors like Broad and Washington would be one where it'd be nice if you don't have to push the button.
And I think the first phase needs to make sure that it gets synchronized and that timing is optimized. And then we have the ability to collect the data and actually see near misses and traffic flow and high peak. And then you can do that second, and it can get back to what DPW's been saying. I've heard Wyatt say and the chief make data-driven decisions.
Uh, so maybe the 2B, because it's probably on somebody's bingo card. Um, LPIs is part of that for me. I've asked about it for probably 10 years now. I think we have nine intersections with LPIs. That's another great kind of low-cost pedestrian-friendly way to let just pedestrians have a head start. I think we have nine intersections with LPIs. I think I was told that we need more of our intersections upgraded before we could add more LPIs. But that would be another like good low-cost thing that we can do. Um, moving on to complete streets, so we haven't adopted it yet. But I guess with all the, the new paving money we're going to have, are we going to kind of reexamine the streets before we repave? To look at whether we should do additional markings, whether we could put in bike facilities, whether we could, you know, note parking or narrow things, you know, with striping?
So at the beginning of each year, as we start to create our annual paving plan, we do have a joint meeting with DPW Engineering, Operations and Planning. And we run through each of the streets together and see if there are any infrastructure upgrades that we can accomplish with the budget that we have from a bike perspective, planning perspective, walkability perspective, changing like the crosswalks if there's some sort of a need for that that's been identified over the past years. Um, so we do look at it through that lens as we update the plan.
Are we too late to kind of catch the next wave of paving projects that's going to start? Or are we going to make any changes to the streets that are planned to be paved in the coming year?
So we have, um, an outlook that goes, we're, we're, we're working on a three-year plan, but right now we have the next two fiscal years. But we don't actually do the drive-through with planning and operations until the year prior. So we haven't done any drive-throughs recently. And as soon as we get to the new fiscal year, we'll be looking at doing that drive-through. Um, so there's definitely time for us to take a look at anything that hasn't been paved yet as part of this fiscal year.
Well, I know it's been on our work plan to kind of adopt Vision Zero and complete streets. Uh, and now that we have Amanda on board, hopefully we can get to that. But I would love to be able to catch things in flight or before they're in flight so that we're not too late and have repaved and restriped the de facto when we probably could have done something different or might have been desired to do something different on that street. So paving seems like a really good time to catch it and get to a complete street. So on paving, uh, was it the Great Recession, Wyatt, where we really took money away from the paving budget? That was like '08, so like 17 years ago. So obviously, it took, you know, it's been many years since we've been able to rebuild that backup. But I guess one of my questions, and I think Tara, you might have answered it. Uh, my question was like, what is the catch-up plan? It took us 17 years to get to this point. Like, how do we get back up? Um, but I guess we're waiting for the new PCI data to figure out how are we going to?
Yeah, so we're, we're collecting the data in May. I think we should have it, um, by the end of June in terms of a data set that we can work with. And then part of why we wanted to carve out additional money, um, this time specifically for pavement management is so that we can utilize the same consultant who's collecting our PCI data to also take a look at our whole entire pavement management system. They did build our PCI system for us. So one of the things that is kind of unique to the city, I suppose, is we wanted to look at practical paving limits because being small and having limited budget, we want to make sure each time that we're going out there that we're, we're covering as much as we can and having very logical cutoffs, which is very different than how the data is normally collected when you're looking at a huge network that encompasses like a 50-square-mile area or something, right? Um, so we've done that to make sure that we're, we're paving roads in a logical sense. And then what the pavement management software will do as we start to look into what that'll look like and employ that is it, it doesn't, it'll, it has a whole series of algorithms that it runs. And ultimately, it shows you how you're going to get the best bang for your buck. So what roads do you need to capture right now in order to extend their life for the longest amount possible? And do that for your entire network?
Before it drops off on that curve.
Before it drops off and you're in a position where you have to reconstruct or you're going to repave, and it's just going to drop off again relatively quickly. Um, so the software will help us make those types of decisions. And so that's what we're looking to, um, look into and implement this next fiscal year.
Okay. Sidewalks and moving to missing links, um, I think we talked about this, Tara, when you presented us kind of the recommendation of where to use the missing links money for the coming, the ending fiscal year. And I think one of the priorities was obviously getting to ADA. Um, there were some concerns about whether we should really just prioritize those dead-end streets. Roberts Park, I think, being one that's important where there's a public facility. But I would encourage us to look at probably higher usage streets where there might also still be ADA issues. So that's a comment there. So then some, um, kind of closing observation. So I'm glad that we, you're showing us some throughput data on NTC because I think I had asked for what average wait times and throughput. And I think generally, the expectation from the community is that it should not take two years and that we probably want to get more than two projects done per year because I think we got two done in 2024. Uh, and so I'm heartened to hear that there's other support on council to look at a different way of tackling this. Whether it's an NTC 3.0, maybe, you know, where some of it, you retain a bottoms-up element. But I think some of it does need to be more tops-down and ideally driven through the data that we collect based on crashes and injuries and just saying, no, we're just going to make these changes and use some of the same resources to get to those projects faster. I think our role is to kind of defend that with the community and manage it with the community. But I think given that what we're seeing now and what the community's expectations are in terms of actually changing the road, um, the roads to meet people's expectations, what safe roads are, I think we need to look at doing it pretty differently. And so I'd encourage DPW to think about, um, revamping and potentially the CACT, uh, since the chair is here as well, to collaborate with us on what a 3.0 version of that might look like um, so that we can actually deliver faster projects. I know that NTC is a very popular thing and bottoms-up is important. But I think to get the results and outcomes we want, we do need to do it differently. Second general observation I have, um, we have a structural issue with money. Um, as I think about the past kind of five years, we've had a whole slew of just one-time money in the city, whether it's ARPA money, grant money, we've been very successful in getting, you know, NVTA money. What, like, lots of great transportation money. And result is we build a whole bunch of stuff in the city past five years. Now we need to maintain it. Uh, and so I'm pretty concerned whether it's public works, new buildings that we've built, um, new parklets, new parks. Like, just this morning, I was walking through the Berman crossings, which have these beautiful plantings. I'm like, well, who's going to go weed all these gardens? Um, so I'm pretty worried about that. And so not transportation-related, but I would encourage public works to give thought into like all the new stuff we've built as a city over the past five years with all this one-time money, which again, we're very grateful for because when you're a little city, you do need to rely on that grant money, what it means to maintain it going forward. I do not want to be in a position or leave a council in a position where 10 years from now we are dealing with street poles that are falling over because we didn't do a good job maintaining new ones we put in. Uh, and so I'd encourage us for all the new stuff, maybe go back in inventory, all the new stuff we've built across the entire city's kind of infrastructure and figure out what a realistic cost is to maintain it going forward so that future councils are not inheriting a giant bill or issues that require much more money to take care of down the road. So I think at the time, we were very grateful for all this one-time money, but I think it does cause a structural issue and, uh, for future councils' budgets. So I think now is a good time to at least stare at those numbers and think about what that might mean. So with that, um, any other thoughts, public works related or transportation related?
I just, uh, plus one on the, um, top-bottom approach. I know I already said this before, but I would say to me with traffic calming, I do feel like those streets that have bus stops should be one that we really, you know, because those, those are tough ones and those little kids are not always looking both ways crossing those streets. So I would just say if we wanted to explore maybe a different approach, to me, that is, those are ones that float to the top for me, ones with bus stops. Thanks.
In general, like, high pedestrian, like, vulnerable populations, bus stops being a big part of it, like, we should concentrate on where we have lots of people using streets and might be getting hurt.
That's what I was going to say. The volume is not just cars, but also people and the ages of the volumes of people. Like, are part of the data that's collected that inform the safety engineering.
And I want you to hold us accountable to that because I know that it's often, we will get neighborhoods who will be upset with, you know, parking getting taken away or changes to their street or signs in front of the yard, you know, depending on what the issue is. But I think you're hearing from us that, you know, in order to see things differently, we're willing to feel some of that heat. Um, and so challenge us on that. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good discussion. We appreciate it.
Appreciate the in-depth discussion. We are at past 10 o'clock. Do we want to take a break before we get to trash? Or keep going? People are okay? Okay, sounds like we need a bathroom break. Um, it's 10:06, so can we go come back at 10:15? Thank you all.
Mayor, just to let you know, FCC TV is ready and I've turned the mic back on in the room. So ready when you are.
All right. So for solid waste, we don't have a kind of an update to the presentation. We do have some additional information from the council's questions and from the last time that this was discussed. We do have the treasurer who is, I think, participating virtually. And so two questions that the council had were just about the feasibility of if the council were to proceed with wanting to implement a fee that would be associated with a reduction in the tax rate, is that feasible to do as a technical matter between now and the mailing out of the bill in November? And the treasurer can speak to that. I know that the treasurer has met with Tyler Technology and discussed kind of what that would look like through going through our vendor and they can provide some information on that. I think the bottom line is we believe it is feasible to do it and we can provide some more information on that. The probably with some caveats, there was a question about the revenue sharing agreement with the schools. I do think it's feasible to have a carve-out, sort of a hold harmless provision that would be written into the revenue sharing approach that is a written document. And I've provided a draft of what that could look like and it just provides a pretty simple methodology by which the intent, which is both the general government and the schools would be held harmless in terms of the revenue sharing agreement with any change to a fee structure for solid waste services. And we would, this is before the council, really just to let you know, words have been put on paper that we think are feasible. This has not yet been reviewed by the schools and we'll have some back and forth as we always do on these. But the basic idea is if it's worth 1.5 cents, we would do the 50-50 split and then after that is arrived at, we then deduct 0.75 cents on the tax rate out of the general government budget and increase the school transfer amount by the same amount. That would have that effect. And if it were translated into pennies on the tax rate, that would just grow naturally over time. So that's just some information on that and we'll continue, we'll think that through a little bit more, but it's, that's not too complicated. One other thing that's been passed out to the council, this is in response to questions about kind of what the impact of a reduction of the tax rate would be for condo owners, townhouse owners and single-family homeowners. And so in that chart, which I, Cindy, if I'm allowed to share my screen, I could just put it up real quick. It shows several bell curves of kind of what the, what those look like. And so the blue bell curve, and it hasn't been smoothed out to look like a bell curve, but the median condo value is assessed at between $400,000 and $600,000. That's sort of the peak of the bell curve there. With townhouses, you have a cluster of townhouses that are in the 600,000 to 800,000 range and then you jump over to another cluster that are very similar in value to single-family homes and that 1 million to 1.2 million. And then single-family homes, their median is typically at that 1 million to 1.2 million as well. This was requested just to have some sense and you can then do the math in terms of, which we've tried to do in the earlier presentation, in terms of what the impacts are for folks who sort of fall on this, on this chart in different levels.
Is the Y-axis the number of properties?
Yeah, so that's right. And so for the condos, for instance, there are just over five, about 550 that are in that $400,000 to $600,000 range. The single-family home, which there are more of those than condos, and so the bell curve is a little flattened out, but its peak is about 700 homes are in that 1 million to 1.2 million.
And confirm my math on this, but I think it was 3,000 single-family homes plus townhomes. So the sum of the red line and green line is around 3,000?
3,066.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's right. Just over 3,000.
Okay. Sum of the red line and the green line is 3,000 and then, you know, roughly the condos and the...
Yeah, there are about 1,000 condos. There are eight condo buildings comprised of 958 units, thereabouts.
And what's not on here is any apartments or commercial buildings?
So multifamily, there are 15 multifamily homes and there are about 2,000 people, 2,000 households in those 15 buildings.
Because we are 50-50 in terms of housing stock.
Over 50-50, so I'm talking in kind of round numbers. So that, that gives sort of a, just a high-level picture of it.
When you talk about multifamily, does that also include like, not just the buildings, but the developments like Falls Green or the ones off Broad Street? Are they, do they count as apartment buildings, even though it's a whole development?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
That's right. So in terms of where I think kind of, what we want to get out of tonight's discussion, I think there's probably two options at this point. One option would be for the council to proceed with a tax rate reduction and to set a fee and to do that at your, in conjunction with the budget this year. If the council were to do that, well, we would recommend just going with the flat fee, not the variable fee. We would further recommend that composting be something we implement over a longer period of time. So what this really would be is a transition to a fee structure where solid waste would be effectively an enterprise fund. And then from there, we would work with community on kind of all the things that that could mean. That can open up new opportunities for composting, for different ways that we treat other services that we have because it would be out of the tax rate and sort of its own self-supported So that is one option. The other option is to, is to take some additional time to study this in a more holistic way. So we have a lot of policy behind this. The city council just in 2024 adopted the solid waste management plan. It is a really rich document with lots of data and with lots of policy recommendations. The fee fairness question was one of many dozens of recommendations. And the real heart of that solid waste management plan is geared towards encouraging a greater reduction of waste flows, reuse of materials, recycling, reducing the amount of flows to the waste energy plant for the environmental benefits, the basic efficiency of it, as well as the cost benefits of that. And so one of the very powerful ways that we can do that is having a fee structure that provides one structural support for making that transition. We, as was noted in the last discussion, staff have not done a deep study of providing, of instead of moving to a fee, instead of providing service to the condo buildings or to the multifamily buildings, I do submit to you, that's a complex undertaking. It's one that is not called for really in our solid waste management plan. It's not envisioned there as a recommendation and we don't have precedence for that in the region. And so I do have some misgivings thinking that that's going to be a very likely direction that after evaluating it in more depth, that we would want to go in. What we can anticipate is that it would be a higher cost of service and so there'd be an increase, if that's the direction we went, there would be an increase in the tax rate and it stayed within the tax structure, there would be an increase in the tax rate to provide that higher level of service. But that would be the other way to address the equity issue. Again, it has not been studied in depth. Even studying it is a pretty significant undertaking. But we would have time to do that and more importantly, I think, study the ways that we can make sure that we aligned our, how we pay for the service with our policy goals. And that would be the objective of taking additional time to study it. The composting piece could fit either an option one or an option two, but I think composting, if we went with option, you know, with sort of the more accelerated path of doing it with this budget, I think that that would be a big lift for staff to work with community in terms of who's going to subscribe to that composting service, how we're going to roll it out. And we also would need $155,000 in the budget to buy the bins, which we don't have at the current time. We have Mr. Holmes, we have Mr. Young here. Do you have anything you would add to that summation? And then look forward to engaging with the council and getting council's thoughts on this.
I think the other concern that we have is staff itself. We currently have one, a staff of one, and so to allocate more resources probably from rapid response or some other DPW, it would be very taxing on us.
And maybe before we open it up for discussion, we do have the treasurer on the phone. And so Jody, did you have anything you wanted to add in terms of what I stated at the outset with respect to the feasibility?
No, just I would echo Herb. It would be a heavy lift for us too. But I've got a couple of workarounds. I've talked to finance and they said they would lend us a person, Jay Vias, for the duration, if that's what we end up doing, but then that will also impact finance. So how it would all work out. And we've talked with Tyler Munus and they are confident they can get it done by the middle of October, as long as they say there's no delayed responses from our staff, you know, as we go back and forth working through all this. So that's one reason why we would need extra help from Jay. So that's where we're at. It is, it is feasible, but it will be a very heavy lift.
And then one last thought on that topic, you know, just thinking about sanitary sewer as a utility fund and solid waste moving, possibly becoming a utility fund or an enterprise fund in of itself, I think it's worth thinking through whether we'd want to maybe combine them into one utility fund and conceivably, you know, in discussion with Fairfax Water, could the service be billed through the water bill? You know, that's something that has not been vetted or fleshed out in any way. That is kind of more the Arlington County model of how those things are grouped together. But that would be, if we had some additional time, we could consider those options as well.
Jody, to confirm the resources that you need, every year to add a flat fee or just this first time?
No, just this year. Just until we get it worked out with Munus.
Thank you. And it's only the flat fee one is what you're entertaining?
Yes, that's what we, yes, that's what we've talked with them about.
Questions or comments from council? Thank you for joining us, Jody.
Sure, thanks.
Aaron?
I just, I had a couple of questions that I had sent earlier and thank you for sort of the bell curve of sorts depiction of households and tax kind of assessed value. I don't know if the treasurer or the city manager has an answer. I was interested in whether they're income-based or other exemptions from the stormwater fee, for example. So like state code, I think would allow us to have exemptions or income-based exemptions from a solid waste fee. And so I just didn't know, is that something that exists under the, for the stormwater fee? And then separately, what is the, is there any difference in terms of collection of fees versus collection of taxes? So do you run into people, for example, who pay their taxes but don't pay fees or do they generally like rise and fall together in terms of just enforcement? I was interested in those two cases.
So I know Jody has some insight in terms of the collection of the stormwater fee and then I saw Sally was getting close to the mic as well. But Jody, you had done some work on that question.
Yes. Yes. And we looked at exemptions for stormwater fees back when we were reviewing the senior tax relief and there's no, Sally, correct me if I'm wrong in this, but I believe there's no, there's nothing in the state code that would allow us to exempt stormwater fees. In fact, exempted properties such as churches have to pay stormwater fees. So we couldn't find anything that would allow us to exempt stormwater fees. And I, I don't know about the solid waste fee. Oh, and I guess in terms of collection too, since the stormwater fee is on the real estate bill, it's in the ordinance that we passed that we collect it the same way as real estate taxes and that's why we put it on the real estate tax bill because we, you know, unpaid taxes on our real estate parcel constitute a de facto lien on the property and we can always collect on that, either when the property's sold or, you know, if we have to sell it for delinquent taxes or something, but that's why they did it that way. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yep, that answers the question. I think I had sent the city attorney the code provision on exemptions for solid waste fees. And so I just didn't know our experience in terms of the stormwater fee, but it sounds as though you're saying we don't But it sounds as though you're saying, we don't have exemptions for stormwater fees because we don't have state authority to provide them. And that you haven't had issues in terms of people not paying fees where they pay their taxes, like where they kind of make the decision they're doing one and not the other because you've placed it on the tax bill.
Right, right, exactly.
And I, and I don't, uh, I trust Jody's answer on the stormwater fee. I, that was my inclination, but I have not looked into it. And I can also look, um, at what you've sent about the, um, the, the trash, uh, fee relief or in, income-based fee relief.
And I guess, I mean, where I'm going with these questions is that, um, I, I support trying to do something to address the payment, right, of the condo owners into the general, that, that we're treating curbside, that we're dealing with cap, curbside trash collection through the general fund and the taxes when they're also paying for that service and multifamily and commercial properties. I'm a little bit surprised that like we're in this position because, like I went to the city code and the city code seems to contemplate that there actually is a disposal charge and that there is a fee for service model. And so, you know, it, it does lay out that residents receiving city solid waste service shall pay a solid waste disposal charge to be set by resolution of the city council with the billing scheduled due date for payment and method for payment determined by the city manager, city managers designate. And then it has its own enforcement scheme for failure to pay the charge shall be enforced through any civil remedy available as described in a separate section of this code. And so it's all in the solid waste portion of the code. And so to me, like, we have city code that's governing what it is that we're supposed to be doing. And it looks as though, you know, it has separate provisions for multifamily solid waste collection and commercial solid waste collection. So then in my mind, it's kind of like, well, what, what then does a fee structure look like? And how do we do this in a way that like, it's not a train wreck of trying to implement a fee structure or that it doesn't create its own inequities because we haven't done the work that we're supposed to do and that we're able to do under state co- code or have authority to do under state code to actually have exemptions for, you know, those households with incomes that would warrant getting relief and not having a three hundred and fif- three hundred and ten dollar or three hundred and fifty dollar fee imposed upon them. And so then, then that raises in my mind, you know, we're, we are just kind of throwing out one and a half cents in terms of a number and saying, you know, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But if you need to plan this in a way that has some relief, right, that normally tax relief or fee relief is cost shared across a community and isn't just in the pool of like the people paying the fee. And so is it really a one point five cent reduction or is it a one point two five cent reduction? If you need to leave buffer space for like tax relief, for example. And so I, I have, so I want to do something on this and I think the code actually mandates to do this a certain way, in a way that we're not doing it right now. But I also don't want this to be kind of done haphazardly where we're not kind of doing the fee structure in a way with the depth of analysis that I think it might need to do this properly. And like to answer what I think might be legitimate questions about, like, you know, even if collection fees are say, the same, like if you have tipping fees, you know, does an eight hundred square foot or a thousand square foot townhouse, like should the fee be the same as a four, forty-five hundred square foot home with like an accessory dwelling at this point, right? Like, and so I think there are some questions about fee structure that makes me uncomfortable with just saying it's one and a half cents. Take it out of the tax rate and just impose a three hundred and ten dollar fee across the board on everyone in the city without doing a little bit further thought on that. So that's, that's kind of where I am and I don't know what further thought, like how much of that we can flush out in X number of months.
The things to give some additional thought to is, is a, is a variable fee. Um, to, um, encourage less usage of, of the service. The composting piece, I think, also deserves some additional thought in terms of its rollout. Um, th- those are the main things.
And I guess, and the, the, this gets back to why I've at cer- certain points asked about payment in lieu of service. Because I think that we could potentially do more thought on this in what the fee structure looks like. Even if there's an interim solution of what does it look like? I don't know, you said eight condo buildings with nine hundred and fifty-eight units? Like what would a payment in lieu of service as an interim measure mean in terms of like a payout, if it were even possible, to those eight buildings for fiscal year twenty-six? And then properly implement this in fiscal year twenty-seven, for example?
So on that one, we've not done an exhaustive study on that. We don't know of any precedents in Virginia of people doing that type of thing. We do have, uh, the district of Columba, uh, the district just across the river does do that. Um, but, uh, we don't think we have the authority here in Virginia to do it.
Yeah, and I, and that's why I mean, like, it would be, if, if we don't have the ability and it doesn't look like, right, we have the ability to do a tax credit on an individual tax bill. Can you at least do like a payment in lieu of service to an H O A? Since you're not actually providing the service, but you're billing the building. Okay, and then my third question, I may have just lost. But it will come back to me.
Uh, so in Erin's questions, which I don't think we've talked about publicly, but we probably should since it was in Erin's questions, is about how we actually have authority to do it as a fee and we should be doing it as a fee. So Sally, could you speak to that? So all of council has that same information?
Yes, the, the, the city code that Erin referenced does explain that the, the, and I can pull it up, um, quickly here, um, does explain that the charges for, um, solid waste collection are, is supposed to be, uh, by, charged by fee, not tax. And it's a fee that's supposed to be set by resolution of the city council. And, um, the section that everyone can find it is... Erin, do you have that handy?
It's thirty-four dash three subsection B.
That is old as nineteen forty-eight or how long?
Yes, I went, I went back, I went back to every, um, code that was referenced in our city code back to nineteen ninety-one. And that provision has been there the entire time.
Because I think one of the questions was, do we have authority to move to fee? And I guess the answer is yes, very much so, because we should be doing it as a fee.
Can, oh, my third question came back to me, which was just, uh, can you explain the rationale of the revenue share? So, um, I guess I anticipated that on the revenue share, it would be like a hold harmless for this year where we changed what was a part of the tax rate. But I didn't anticipate that like going forward, it would necessarily be, the revenue share would just sort of be like, this is, this, this is what we need to tax in order to get this level of service or reach these demands of these things we're paying through the taxes. So I, I wasn't really sure like why it's a recurring piece of the revenue share as opposed to a, like, hold harmless for whatever the implementation year now that we've changed like what's in the tax rate midstream.
So it, it wouldn't need to be kind of a perpetual thing. Or whenever you ended it, there'd be a five hundred thousand dollar discrepancy. Now, we'll say that things evolve over time and, and the reason that this has never been sort of, this is more like English common law as opposed to the constitution of the United States. It can evolve over time with through consensus. And so, um, you know, one way it could evolve is that if over time, for various reasons, one, uh, fifty-fifty doesn't work for one or the other, um, then you make some adjustments to that and you go forward that way. And so that would be the other way to handle it is you just change the ratio. And maybe over time, that would be a preferred way of doing it. But right now, it would be, you know, this math would be the correct math.
But I guess it's only one and a half cents, it's one and a half cents based on whatever the cost of the service is. So that's like not a constant. So I just don't understand like some of the, some of the, some of the way that the, one, I don't understand why it's perpetual and maybe it's just I'm having a hard time grasping why something that isn't part of the tax rate is then part of the revenue share? When we're not putting other things into the revenue share that are like fees or charges? And counting it as like in terms of why it's even, why it would be part of the fifty-fifty split? Like I would understand needing to do a correction for the year in which it's off from where we started. But I don't understand why it would be in necessarily going forward. And I don't understand why it would be held at one point five when like that cost could go up or down depending on what like recycling and trash rates and tipping fees and all of that is. Like it seems...
I definitely see your math because if the fee is to be ju- is covering our costs, we're not making a profit. You're not using any other, you're not getting any other revenue from that to then fund things from the general government. I think rather than revenue share would be through the tax rate so that the tax rate is supporting what the schools need. It's not saying to not support the schools' needs, but maybe there, you, you split the fees out for that and then you still have five hundred thousand dollars that you have been providing the schools and you have to figure out what that, where that is in the tax rate. But I'm lost now.
Well...
I'm following what you, am I, are you following what I'm saying? Maybe we're just following each other saying like, that schools' needs are independent of the cost of the trash services. So we need to be funding the schools' needs through our tax rate. And if we separate out the fee for solid waste, we need to be funding the solid waste through the fees. Rather than parsing a revenue share that may or may not get to what the school's actual needs are depending on the fluctuations of the cost of solid waste and how many people participate and all of that. Like the way to fund the schools is through the tax rate.
And that's why, yeah, I, I sort of view it as like a hold harmless this year because it's like the budget estimates came in based on a budget that was X amount that was divided like with fifty-fifty revenue sharing. But I'm having trouble like understanding if it's not supposed to be part of the tax rate and it's not a revenue, it's just a fee for service, why it's not treated like other fees and the revenue sharing just not part of the cost split.
This would be doing that, but yes?
Yes, so we would be reducing the base
To be shared.
To be shared next year in twenty-seven and that reduction would remain forever. Any growth on top would be on a reduced base. So in order not to create that imbalance and carry on with the current transfer amounts that we have and then build a growth, I think this is the best way of holding a penny and a half in the revenue share. Not attach it to the waste fees by any means. The waste fees can, you can add a third bin later, they can just go their own route. But this one and a half cent would just grow with the rest of the tax revenue.
Yeah, I guess I'm just understand, I don't understand if we're talking about it in akin to an enterprise fund. Like the enterprise funds aren't at all part of the revenue share, right? So like...
General fund.
That's what this does.
Yeah. Yeah, but you don't, then you don't reduce your tax rate.
Yeah.
Why reduce the tax rate and then put it in the fee structure? Like if you're saying, you take your solid waste fees out and that's nine hundred thousand dollars and that reduces the revenue share because we're dropping the tax rate. Don't drop, drop the tax rate and it stays in the tax rate to fund the schools, not in the fee where service is provided.
Maybe it's a good offline conversation, we can just walk people through it.
I mean, the intent is to provide the services that the school...
The intent is to hold everybody harmless.
Right.
And, and we think this does it, but there'll be some more iterations. Um, there'll be more discussion about it.
Okay. Mary Beth?
I sent in a question. I don't see an answer to it. And that is, if we know how many H O As are providing trash service to their residents, can we refund them that amount? Or is that backwards?
What she's asked.
Okay, just in different words.
Same, same, we would probably have to standardize it, um, but that concept does not appear to be allowed in Virginia law.
Okay, sorry, I wasn't listening to that one. I was just writing it down. And because you mentioned the solid waste management program, I Googled it. And it's really interesting how this group of people that met for over a year looked at this without taking any of this into consideration. But on page eight, they're talking about the fact that we have more homes than multifamily buildings and... But in their minds, they were looking at it from the prospect of getting to zero waste. That was the main goal. So they're saying, as the city moves towards its sustainable and waste reduction goals, it will be critical to consider providing supporting services and/or programs for multifamily dwellings to be able to participate in zero waste. So that's the other side of that is that there may be additional costs to get people to participate in zero waste. Which seems to be like two sides of the same coin.
In, in Fairfax County and their zero waste goals is trying to engage with multifamily community too. But that, they've got, they have that like out in year eight and year twelve in terms of their management plan.
I think Arlington's plan is to add all those compost bins in their multi, in their commercial corridors to encourage people in multifamily to...
To use it, right.
We're small enough that I, when I visit multifamily buildings, a lot of people say, oh, I just go to the community center and I take my compost.
And do it there, right.
Love to have compost in their buildings, but practically people can get to the community center.
Right, right. But I, and I sent those to the thing from Laura, Maryland and the slideshow from Arlington that were at the Cog Farm Committee, which also kind of lay out a rationale for composting or organic recycling, as they're calling it, and how to do that in, in different ways. Which is just interest, an interesting data point as we look to the future.
Mary Beth, do you want to read your disclosure statement while you have the mic? Okay. Other thoughts? Laura?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, and, and I appreciate Ms. Acosta saying that, you know, you all, you think you could, um, get this done maybe with some help. I did, you know, I did note that there were two staff members from the treasurer's office who, who wrote in against this. So I'll be clear, I, I support this. I, I, um, you know, for equity reasons and I, I totally get it. But, you know, I, it's a lot, you know, on our staff. And so it's sort of, as I always say, the devil's in the detail. So, um, you know, overall, I do support it, but I did note that two, um, staff members in the treasurer's office wrote in, uh, with different reasons. One was just that it's a heavy lift for their office. And the other was worrying about, you know, um, does it then create burdens on other, which we talked about, especially with the, um, you know, with that chart, which I do not like, um, with the, uh, property values. You know, the lower property values have the greater net impact. Um, so just throwing that out there. And so just to be clear, we could not, if I'm understanding what we were talking about. So if there were, um, seniors who were receiving tax relief, they could not receive relief from this, right? Because it's a fee. Is that right?
The, um, the stormwater fee is what is, you cannot have an exemption for under state code. I'm not sure about the solid waste fee.
And the state code does provide express authority to, uh, provide relief to income-eligible people for solid waste collection.
Oh, okay. It does, it does allow you to, okay.
We just have to get, we'd have to actually do an ordinance. So that's the thing as part of it is just making sure like we're equipped to do that. And then you have to figure out how many corresponding homes you might have who seek it, right? Because you'd then need to, yeah, increase.
Right, and I don't, I have no idea of those, those numbers. I have no idea. You know, I'm just throwing that out there. I have no idea that what those numbers would be, but that just sort of... I have no idea that what those numbers would be, but that just sort of came to my mind. Again, looking at this, at this chart and, and the net impact on those lower property values is higher than the higher property values. So I was just thinking about, you know, seniors who, who do receive tax relief from us. And then the only thing, other thing I wanted to throw out, I know, Mary Hardy, you had, you know, championed the organic bin, but I also, you know, I get it, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is, is, it's not, you know, a small amount of money. So I didn't know if there's a way that, you know, if we went forward, if there is a way we could, I would hate for us to spend, put out that kind of money and not have so many takers, you know, on it. So I don't know if that's something that we could, you know, survey people, find out, you know, how many people would really be interested in that before we put out that much cash, I don't know. But again, I, I definitely, I definitely get it and I support it. I'm just, you know, there's a lot of details that we still need to figure out. And I, and I know it's a heavy lift, Wyatt, for your and your staff, so I, that does, you know, burden me a little bit to think about the staff having to do this, so thanks.
I think on the, the one-time cost of the bins, I think Lonnie, the staff's talked about having an incremental rollout of that so we don't buy a whole property yard full of bins that nobody's using. Like, I mean, I think we can be intentional and, and come up with a smart way to do that so we don't spend money unnecessarily.
Maybe you could have.
It's still a cost we have to cover, right?
But maybe you could do a small and have like a waitlist or something, you know, like start it, you know, and then it's just sort of like, oh, we're, we're gonna have another, you know, fifty next year or whatever. Put your name on the waitlist or whatever.
We have like five hundred, three hundred people use composting?
Two hundred and thirty-eight people.
That use composting right now that we're heavily subsidizing, so ideally more than that.
Wait, that's backwards.
Five hundred some, I think.
I have it backwards.
That was opting in. So I think, I mean, I liken this to kind of, in the seventies when we rolled out with recycling, people said, I don't want to recycle. But we said, nope, we're gonna actually make it citywide, you're all gonna get recycling. We're not gonna compel you to recycle, but now that you have it as a bin next to you, people started recycling. And now we have one of the highest recycling weights in the Commonwealth. And so I'm hoping that thirty years from now, when we've moved to composting, people will say, I'm glad that we moved to composting at one point because it made it more accessible. Right now, I think we've seen our composting uptake rate flatten out over time even with this heavy subsidization. So if we actually want to get to those zero waste goals that we all signed off on in our solid waste plant, we do need to do something pretty bold to actually just make it available to everybody. And again, our next door neighbor in Arlington, when they implemented this, said that it was very popular in their single family and townhomes. People kind of grumbled about it first, but they actually realized that it did divert a bunch of trash. So I think the hope is also that you reduce your tipping fees. So at the end of the day, you also reduce some costs too.
And that's what I was gonna say in favor of both the equity on the solid waste, but a rollout across the whole community that we're no longer subsidizing a small number of users of composting, but we are providing it for everybody. And you can still have a rolled out uptake, cause not everybody's gonna do it on day one in terms of staffing, number of pickups, et cetera. But we discussed it at ESC last week as well and certainly ties into carbon reduction and a lot of our energy goals for the overall community and, and the government. So I'm in favor of supporting a rollout of composting to all single family homes and town, or everybody who receives waste services. There was discussion on the type of bin and we can go in these details later, but, you know, the, the smaller type bins that we use right now for composting, is that perhaps an option? And not the three giant bins, I know include waste and we can discuss this further, but that is an option as well.
And I, I think that would actually be important to talk about now as we, I mean, if we're, simply because if we're, if it's a small bin, I'm just thinking about Winter Hill, if you drive by there on trash day. I don't know if they have space for a whole third set of bins, maybe they do. If it's a small bin, that's different, the little carry one or the little, little rolty one that fits a little bit of compost. If it's yard waste and kitchen waste, that's a different thing altogether. Could be good, not necessarily good or bad either way. We just need to kind of understand what we're doing. If we have a contract from waste management or whoever is taking the rest of our trash, then it would make sense to roll it out all at once because it's all part of this contract to serve the whole city. So those are those, those are the details I'm worried about that we may miss along the way in our enthusiasm to do something.
So the financial model that we've put together assumes that it's a combination of yard waste and kitchen waste. So we could, you know, in theory, offer some options on different bin sizes to fit your home, but, but what we, what we've modeled out right now is like, well, you know, some of the costs offset. And so it's a lim, it's a relatively small increase in cost because of that. If we're gonna continue to handle yard waste separate and just do a, a kitchen waste compost thing, that's, that's not an option we've looked at yet.
We'll look like compost crew costs, I imagine.
So will we get rid of bags and stickers?
Correct.
Everyone will have their own bin?
Yes.
That's it, one bin?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Can I jump back in there? I, I don't want to go in depth about the revenue share, but I just want to put this out there. I know that, you know, the school board contacted me and they said they felt like it wasn't fair because we're calling it a fee. They, they feel like it's sort of, you know, by calling it a fee now, now that they're not gonna have access to that as revenue. And I will say, you know, former school board chair, I will say that, you know, the school system, eighty-six percent of their budget is for staff. And so that schools, the school system really relies on that one-time funding to buy electric buses, to, to build a new baseball field. So I, I can see why they are very concerned about losing some of that one-time revenue because that's what they really count on for, for facilities. So I'll just throw that out there, I know we'll just discuss that more to, at another point. But I do, Wyatt, thank you for putting this out there as a, as a draft for us to discuss, appreciate it.
I, I just want to be clear, also I'm not suggesting taking any revenue away. It's just where the revenue is accounted for, whether it's in tax rate or fee rate. And it seems to me longer term it would be beneficial to the schools to have it in the tax rate and to the cities and to everybody paying for waste that you separate that out. So to be very clear, it's not taking, the intent is not to take anything away.
What you're saying?
Yeah. Keep funding this, not that you remove solid waste as a fee for the services you're providing and you leave in the, in your tax rate what it costs to support our schools. That's where it should be supported in the general government tax rate. So that is across all, everybody who can access that. That's everybody who lives in multifamily buildings, it's everybody who lives, you know, so you are keeping that in the tax rate.
So that's what this.
Which is what general, which is what revenue share is, the revenue share is from the tax rate.
You're saying remove it? We can talk about it later.
I will, I, I hear exactly what you're saying and that's what this does.
Yes.
Exactly what you're, you're saying. But we can talk about how that is happening.
Okay, well, the semantics matter in that the intent is to the school retains that and it is, if you're keeping it in the tax rate versus trying to cover it with the fee.
Justine?
So just to be super quick and give my two cents, I would like to talk about the fee or how, how we're doing with the schools offline a little bit more just so that I can get a better understanding. But in terms of moving forward with this, as Herb mentioned, I think it would be best to look into composting over the next, you know, few months and not necessarily try to rush that and implement it now and add more burden to staff. But I do think it would be worthwhile to implement the, split out the trash from the, from the general government fund or excuse me, from, from the tax rate. What I would like to do though, to Aaron's point, is if there can be relief services for people if they do struggle to cover the, the change payment, that is something that I would like to see if we're allowed to do that. And I think that would address a lot of the issues that do come up, that's all.
Okay, to be brief, plus one that, and I guess my fourth point, so find a fairer way to solve solid waste, be greener, divert, you know, food to trash, but also solve this sooner. I think I've talked about why then the timing feels really important because this fairness issue grows bigger. As you add more multifamily, you're getting more people who are paying into this and don't get service. And I think it's easier to do it, the budget's only gonna get harder. And so I think if we kick this a year out, we're gonna be facing with the same challenge with much tougher budgets. And the thought of then implementing a three hundred dollar fee or three hundred fifty dollar fee is just gonna be that much less appetizing for a future council. So I'd encourage us to think about addressing this sooner than later. And then glad to have the opinion from the city attorney that we can address low-income seniors potentially with some relief options. So if we could Google quickly, you know, what, how other jurisdictions handle it? Is that something that, you know, we should look into? How we could implement something, how would it account for how much relief people have given in the past? Whether it's full relief or some of it, I'm sure other people have addressed this too. Dave?
Thanks. My experience with moving essential services into enterprise funds has always come after a full community discussion. And that has not occurred on this topic. We had a great discussion tonight, very convincing arguments for composting, convincing arguments for various sorts of reductions of whatever the fee would be for whatever purposes. What we do know is that if we move on this now without consulting the broader community, about three thousand people are gonna pay more than they will get in terms of any tax reduction. I think it's important we hear from them and it's important we hear from the entire community. So I would favor that we go out to the community, we engage in a full-scale discussion with this. People understand that you're still paying it, whether it's a tax or a fee. And people understand that a significant percentage of the community, and they may go along with this. They may think it's a great idea, they may not. I think it's fundamental that we get a full community discussion of this before we go ahead and enact it because we're smarter than our community. Well, we're not, that's my experience and we'll end up with a good result, I think, if we do that. If not, we could end up with a split community and a lot of anger about why wasn't I consulted about the fact that something that I had considered a basic city service is now a fee and I'll actually pay more than the alleged tax reduction that I may or may not get depending on where I fit into the yet unknown scale. With regard to the equity issues, the clearest and direct way to deal with the equity issue, which the city manager, it's not that tough to get the numbers, that you would simply include that in the tax rate for the condominium buildings that have raised the equity issue. That's the most direct way to deal with it. The complication comes when we're making major changes in the structure of a basic service with unknown components to it, with a lot of discussion about what the, how the numbers would be and whatever. And I think that's what we need a full and fair community discussion about. And if we move now, it's not a full and fair community discussion. So I, I've, I think that these, these are great ideas that have been propounded tonight. I think they deserve a full discussion in the community before we have the hubris to impose this on our community. We've never done it before, we've always ended up with a consensus and I think we should follow that approach here. So my basic view is let's, 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 let's have the discussion with the entire community understanding the financial as well as the environmental and other impacts that it will have on, on them. And I see that a significant number of people will end up paying more as a result of this. So I think they have the right to have their voices heard as well before we make a decision. Thank you.
Any final, Laura?
I believe Ms. Conley, you had floated the idea of doing some sort of working group. You, you had mentioned that you thought we could at a later date, if we went ahead, we could approve the budget and then come back and amend it, is that right or not?
I don't think we can do that. That was like a, a pondering, perhaps we could.
Yeah, just out loud, okay, okay.
Could that happen, but we have to set the tax rate, right?
Although Wyatt did tell us last week that we could actually change the tax rate mid-cycle, we just haven't done it before.
Do you want to speak to that?
Well, there you go, all right.
Hot potato.
Oh, it's been doing some research.
Yes, I, I think that is possible to change the tax rate. We have authority to do that in the middle of the cycle.
What happens, I mean, so there are two issues, right? So there's, what's the tax rate? But then what does the fee structure look like? And so we're thinking about the fee structure in the context of the tax bill so that we get better compliance. But I guess I'm just wondering, you know, how can the conversations about the fee structure take place? Or, you know, can't they take place separate apart from any decision about like whether this is in or out of the budget for purposes of the tax rate, right? So it's a conversation about this nine hun, there are three thousand households that are affected by this decision of where this nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars is expensed, either in the tax rate or in the fee structure. And so you could conceivably make a decision that's like, well, actually per the city code, this should be a charge and not part of the taxes. And so if you make a decision about it's one and a half cents lower because it so happens that it's the nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars and so that's the correlation to the one and a half cents, then it's a conversation with the people who are affected by the fee that they should be having about, do they, do they want a third bin, what size should the third bin be? Like all of those questions, I don't feel like are questions we should answer without community input. But it doesn't mean that like that conversation has to happen and all those answers have to be made by May twelfth because you're talking about just like a pool of people with whom you now need to have that conversation.
You can have that conversation up until October, right? Until we finalize the tax bill.
I think that's just it, it's a conversation that has to happen with those three thousand people that shows them why we're discussing what we're discussing versus, you know, if somebody asks you if you want to pay a higher fee, the answer is presumably always, almost always gonna be no. So the discussion needs to be why the change in fee structure versus what you want to pay.
Yeah, and do you want a third bin or do you want to like all just compost at the community center? Like everyone else is gonna be composting, right? Like, I mean, it's, that's what I mean. Like, once you make a decision, you should be able to disentangle these things and then have the conversation with the people to the extent that like we are mandated one way or the other to do this.
Well, I, I mean, I would submit what should drive the whole discussion is, is your policy. And your policy is to reduce waste.
Yep.
And the pricing structure can be one tool to help you do that. That's what should drive it.
Composting is another tool.
And that's what would take, that's really kind of what the thought process would be about is designing a fee structure so that it, so that it does that. And I think by extension, that also would probably address the senior tax relief issue. And so we wouldn't need to have a complicated tax relief program for this, senior relief program. It would be based on your volume of waste and that's, that's, would be alignment. We haven't designed that system yet. So there's, you know, the, the policy basis behind this does it, does speak to the equity issue. But that's kind of the secondary issue, the primary issue is about solid waste policy. And so that's, that's what's kind of, to me is a little bit what we're, a difficulty with trying to do this just from a fee perspective about taking just one dimension of, of the problem. Now, we could take additional time after the decision has been made to move to a fee. We could do this down the road, doesn't mean, so it just means it'll be probably a little clunkier in the rollout. There'll be lots of questions for which we're not ready for the answers because we haven't done the work yet.
Like if our primary goal is to divert less waste into trash, like composting is one way also. A pay-as-you-throw model is another way. I guess data point of one, my household, because we back garden compost, like we produce half as much trash. Like we only drag our bins to the curb every other week or so, right? And so other people who compost may have similar experience. So if that reduces my trash by fifty percent, like that's pretty significant, way more, you know, as significant as a big bin versus little bin. So other people who compost, I'm kind of curious, using additional data points, like what is impactful? If our primary goal is to divert less food and less waste to trash, like composting is as impactful as a pay-as-you-throw model because now you're providing another way of giving it. giving it less, things go less in the landfill. So you may not have to do it all at once. You could do a flat fee with compost and then you could move to a pay-as-you-throw in future years.
Madam Mayor, I, I would just submit that you make very convincing arguments. Let's take it to the public. Let's see whether the public accepts your arguments rather than sort of saying, we're going to do this and simply communicate to the public about, well, we're going to do it and you can do this under this or that. Seems to me it's a fundamental change in what we're doing. There are costs that will be imposed, that will create more lack of equity as we've already seen. And my own view is I want to know what the community thinks about this before I'm going to make a change like this. Now, others may disagree with that, but that's, I think, the better, longer-term course is to get community buy-in from the very beginning with respect to the policy and the other elements of this program. If in fact, that's the way that we would like the community to, to begin to discuss this issue. But this issue has not been widely discussed in the community, it's not been widely covered. And I think you'd make a serious mistake to impose a major change like this with economic consequences.
I think, nobody disagrees, I think, with the need to communicate, obviously. I've had people talk about it in my office hours, I've had people respond to me based on my blog posts, and so there has been discussion about it. Now that said, we've also had lots of input on our solid waste plan, our government energy plan, our climate plan. So those are policy documents that we have adopted with community input. And so we are truing back to those policy goals. And clearly, we can keep doing more communication, like if whatever we decide in May 12th doesn't get implemented until the tax bill at the end of the year. And so I think there is still room for ample discussion on how exactly the mechanics of this go. The composting thing is actually, I think it's a $20 impact to the overall fee, 22, sorry. The biggest change is the fact that we've had more than half the city subsidize the cost of solid waste for single-family and townhomes. That's just the reality. We're not adding a bunch of whole new costs other than the composting of $22, which we're posing as a, you know, way to divert, you know, trash from the landfill.
Actually, you are. Look at the chart. The chart says vast numbers of people are going to pay more
They pay more because...
in your fee or who, whatever the fee is versus the alleged tax reduction that they would get. I mean, just have the discussion with the community. What are we afraid of?
Just personally, I feel comfortable moving forward with this specifically because it's part of the budget discussion. And so anyone that's interested in the tax rate and economic impact to their bill should be paying attention to this discussion that we're having now and should be reading the news press or would be engaged in sending us letters or contacting city council members regarding their economic impact. And I've, I've heard from people from, who've discussed things in both, both directions, understanding that, you know, whether or not this is a, a fair system that, that's in existence right now. And then also people saying that they understand if their bill goes up, but, you know, their assessment didn't go up as much. So at least from the people that I've been communicating with, it does seem like people are paying attention and especially those that would, would face an impact. So anyway, from my perspective, I do feel comfortable moving forward because this is part of the budget discussion.
I would, I, I'm not sure. I, I don't, I don't maybe share your optimism. I think, you know, we don't have the news press delivered anymore to the homes. I mean, one thought would be maybe we could send out, you know, I don't know if it's focus or if it's a quick news release or something, but we have the budget town hall coming up on Thursday. So maybe that's a way to do it is to send out, you know, not to get, no offense to Mary Catherine, but buried in a focus, maybe it's a quick news, a quick press release that says the city's, you know, thinking about how maybe changing the, the way that we charge for tax services and, you know, adding some more composting options and all that. If you want to hear more, come to the budget town hall on Thursday. That might be one way to do it. But I just, I just don't know. I, I don't, I have, I don't, no one in my neighborhood knows anything that we're talking about with this. So, because I've talked to them and they don't have any clue. So I just, I think the people that are well informed, you know, that follow things are, but I think the general, you know, public probably may not be as informed as we hope. So that's just, that's just a thought.
So I'm still on the fence. I, I, I hear both sides of this and I, my, my, I can just continue to worry that we will go fast and break things. And I don't, we don't do that. We, we, it's like we're riding the bicycle and trying to build the bicycle at the same time. And I know we have those policy documents, nice bike path that we're on, but it seems like there's a lot of moving parts to be four weeks before the budget adoption and still just not quite sure. That being said, I could be convinced because I feel like it makes sense, but it's taken me a bunch of weeks to talk about it and think it through and, and, you know, when I pay my federal taxes, you know, who knows what the fees are? I get a bill and I pay the bill and I'm not looking at whether it's $300 less than last year, I'm, whatever, I'm just paying it. And I think for a lot of people, that's exactly what it'd be. They're just going to pay it and, and they're not going to get all stressed out about it. So, so I see the pluses and minuses that, that is, but I'm worried that we're going quickly without really thinking about all the ins and outs. Although we have talked about it a lot, so I don't know if there could be any other ins and outs that we haven't yet considered.
One takeaway to follow up on revenue share, to understand the mechanics of what that means. Are there other takeaways on this one or next steps? Communication idea, like how can we...
We will use the Thursday town hall at 7:00 PM to, we'll, we'll spend a fair amount of time on this topic as well as the next topic on this work session agenda, which is budget reductions.
Let's move on to that then, since it's 11:30.
The two hooks for the town hall meeting.
Can I, can I make one? And I know I've kind of mentioned this in passing at other points in time, but given both our transportation-related discussion and now this discussion about tax rates, it's not advertised for fiscal year '26. I'm not asking for anything for fiscal year '26, but when we turn to fiscal year '27, can we start looking at the CNI tax as a place, you know, to potentially increase transportation-related revenues also to the extent that like purely commercial properties are getting the benefit of any reduction that's based on the fee for the trash fee moving to a purely fee model? You know, there's a, there's certain ways to recalibrate that in terms of, you know, what could be a windfall, so to speak, of purely commercial properties. You can make back some of that because when you look at other tax rates like Fairfax, it's like 104 on a residential property plus the X hundred dollar trash fee bill, but then they're like charging 116.5 to commercial properties because it's 104 plus the 12 and a half cent CNI tax. So I think we need to also just think more about what we're currently putting into our budgets and cost spreading across everyone for transportation-related local offense, local costs. And then maybe look at how you reduce the tax rate further, but maybe get it back in CNI tax in order to help with those different like residential cost burdens that people are just continuing to bear otherwise.
I think CNI, for me at least, is on the list of levers, not necessarily for this year, but if the budget is going to go the way it's going to go probably for the next three years, probably needs to be on the list.
Agreed.
Okay.
The city council is going to be discussing the FY '26 budget for the city of Falls Church. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, which may be affected by the proposed fiscal policies. As a result, I am in a group of three or more people who may realize a reasonably foreseeable direct or indirect benefit from the proposed ordinance. After consideration, I am electing to participate in this transaction because I'm confident in my ability to participate fairly objectively and in the public interest.
Okay, budget options, Wyatt.
Kieran, what do we have to say about budget reductions?
Want me to go? Okay. So two ways of doing it are looking at our revenues and our expenditures. On the revenues, I will give out a couple of things. We, staff is still, I want to just preface this by saying that staff isn't still in the review process. It's, some of the things are going to take some more analysis and due to some staff out on spring break, we plan to bring a lot more details next Monday. So on the revenue side, a couple of things to note is one penny on the tax, real estate tax rate is $630,000. The budget also includes a contingency of $500,000, although I believe we should keep it intact, not knowing the full impact that's going to roll out during the fiscal year of the federal budget impact. And then 20 cents increase on the vehicle tax amounts to $280,000. So that's as far as we've gone on the revenues. On the expenditures, we're looking at various categories and whatever we bring to you will have, along with it, an impact to some or the other operation, service, products that we're doing. And we're looking at personnel, which includes vacancies, compensation and other, either whether it's full-time or temp or, or looking at vacancy factors and things like that. Non-personnel could be a review and is going to include a review of our contracts that we have. Some major ones are in DPW. Some of the ones that we are, that are interjurisdictional, we can't touch those. However, we're going to have to make some hard decisions if that's the way we want to go. There are contracts for infrastructure maintenance, land view, security in the building and those kind of things, maybe not necessarily mandated, but staff and council together has planned in the prior years and even this year to increase the funding there. But, and then the other thing that we would look at are other miscellaneous places where there could be some possible internal policy for the city management on travel conferences. What do we do? Do we put a halt on travel outside of Virginia? And we're looking at each departmental budgets and where we would land if we were to go that way. Some of the training, there are options for virtual, but not all. So it's going to be a case-by-case analysis, going to need a little bit more time. So we plan to bring you more details at our next meeting, April 28th, Monday. But I'm happy to address any questions. We're all here or take any direction that you may provide.
And, you know, I think we are trying to start with a service impact approach. And so if the council does have thoughts on service reductions, you know, areas where you'd say, you know, this would be a lower priority, so consider reductions for these services here, higher priority services that we don't want to cut at all. And so if the council does have any initial thoughts on that, as we're doing our work, that would be welcome.
I guess knowing order of magnitude would help. So based on the expenditures that you've talked about, like personnel compensation, vacancies, like would some combination of that be enough to get us there where we don't then have to talk about reduction in services to know like, how big are those levers, right?
Even making impact in vacancies is going to affect our service levels because there's a reason those positions were to be in the, either they're new and they're being recruited or there are vacancies people have left. So we, we are actually scrutinizing every single vacancy, where it's at in the process of the recruitment. Can we put a stop at this time or not? And if we did, what impact it would have? And it's highly unlikely we could come up with even two vacancies that would not have any impact on the service level.
Okay, thoughts?
I have a couple of questions. Justine mentioned, I think at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, we were talking about taking more out of the retirement savings, the extra interest. I know that would be a one-time, but that was about $140,000 possibly?
We're really, or we're going to recommend strongly against one-time things. It's going to, next year's budget's going to be worse than this one. So we're, we're encouraged not to do one-time things.
So not to use that money at all or maybe take out that much every year?
Well, yeah, I mean, if we go that direction, we're, we are most likely going to experience big market losses in the pension fund. So we're going to be drawing down on those reserves to sustain the 640 that we already are benefiting from. So this is, to me, the time you take that money out and maybe increase it is after, when you feel like you have some pretty rosy days ahead and it would be a safe thing to do. That's just, that would be our recommendation.
That's totally fine. I just wanted to make sure that
Yeah.
what your thinking was on that. I think as we've talked about, only taking out the 640 is for smoothing times and this is definitely a time that needs that smoothing. So, so that one would be off the table as a, that lever is locked, not able to...
I think so. I think that's a tough one to feel comfortable, it's kind of, or something that's going to put us in a better position for next year's tough budget.
Okay.
When you talk about one time, we had talked about, you know, Crossman Park not being the top priority for expenditures because Arlington has built that huge park across the street from it. But you didn't mention that. Is that because that's also one time?
Yeah, that's being paid for out of capital reserves. So if we reduce that, it could be good to save that money and that's not a bad thing to do, but it won't help close the $600,000 gap, 1.2 million total for general government schools.
Have we heard from the schools?
We have not. I think key staff were out last week. They're back and we'll have conversations this week.
I, I think the other thing, I was just writing down things that we heard tonight about we need more paving, we need more sidewalks. I just wonder. We get to decide basically how much revenue we have to work with. Like when I first got on council and I was refinancing my house, I was talking to the person on the phone and she said, well, we're going to, this is what your rate's going to be. Now you really don't have any control over what the taxes are. And I was like, well, actually, I do have a little bit. And that, she didn't understand at all what I was talking about. But, but if we look at it, what was presented to us was 5.9% growth with, which would be a two and a half cent tax cut based upon the original plan. Do we have to have a two and a half cent tax cut? Is that, how, what, where is that on the priority list? Is that number one on the priority list, that we want to keep it at two and a half cents? If there are, if we look at, like you haven't heard from the schools yet, but if you look at the school's budget, they built that on that 5.9%. So who knows where their levers are? Or if they had originally asked for seven or eight percent and got it down to 5.9%. We still don't know what the governor's money is. So I guess in the priority of things is being able to say, well, we're going to not increase the tax rate two and a half cents or decrease the tax rate two and a half cents, decrease it a different amount, not decrease it at all. Is that one of the levers? Does that make sense based upon what Kieran's saying about the needs that we have, what we just heard from transportation about the needs that we have? Does it make sense to, to not reduce that tax rate? So I'm just putting that out there for discussion, but I do think that's important to talk about as we go forward.
I just wanted to make a few comments. Yeah, I hear you on not reducing the tax rate like two and a half cents. I would have a hard time still supporting just a flat rate, understanding, I think that our equalization rate was like 114 something, right? And we're talking about a tax rate that's 121 at a time when people are as heavily cost burdened as they are. And so to me, like, I don't know, just coming in on a flat, flat rate as opposed to some reduction, I think everyone sort of has to bear the cost. You can't just say to the community, you, you know, you, because real estate values are going to get us out of this hole, we're going to come to you and have you absorb kind of the 1.0 million, the 1.2 million that doesn't seem like we're getting out of the 25% sort of like meals, sales tax bucket that we thought we could get. And so my view of it is like everyone's going to have to bear some piece of it. gonna have to bear some piece of it, whether it's, you know, the city finding some places and expenditures, and maybe not doing the full 2.5 cents, but something short of that and still getting some reduction. I also don't support rating the pension fund, and wouldn't support rating the pension fund. And, I mean, and then, I'll say it in a way that sounds harsh, because I think people who rely on it will be like, "Wait, what? What are you doing to the pension fund?" And then on personal property tax, I still have a hard time thinking of going to five, unless we actually go find those cars in the city that, you know, should be paying personal property tax that aren't. And so for me, you know, in the budget book, it says something like 20, a $20,000 part-time position would expect to bring in like several hundred thousand dollars of car taxes that aren't, personal property taxes that aren't being paid. And so I don't kind of understand, unless that's just very rosy thinking, that, that $20,000 position is gonna bring in that much revenue. But I do think it's important to not just like go after all the places we know money exists, or that we can squeeze extra money out of, but thinking about where are those places that we're not actually getting taxes, that we should be getting taxes, and how do we find them, instead of just raising the rate on the people who are already paying the personal property tax. So I don't know if you have a reaction on that $20,000 expenditure that's in there for a part-time comrev position, given that it seemingly was related to several, several hundred thousand dollars that we're not collecting right now?
I would say, it's kind of a flippant response, but when you're in accounts receivable, every position, you know, the treasurer's office has five people, and they raise $100 million, so, you know, every position is, brings in a lot of money, because that's the job.
But I, I mean, this says it's a 20, it would be $20,000, and this person would bring in several hundred thousand dollars. So how is the position not paying for itself and more?
Well, yeah, I guess the question is, that position needs to be bringing in $20 million, if it's gonna be comparable to the other positions in, in the office.
The thing I would offer, you know, we've had some really good discussions with our constitutional partners here over the last couple of months on, on how to get at some of, I think, the areas that you're talking about with the team we have, right? And so what, some of it becomes more of a process question, and a communication question, than a staffing question, in my mind, right? And it doesn't mean we won't come back to that as, as a potential need to fill a gap in, in the process, but, but I think kind of working with the Commissioner of Revenue and the Treasurer's Office, we've got some, some things in the works, they've got some things in the works that we're supporting that, that I think are gonna help close the gap.
Feel like you're gonna be able to find the cars, so to speak, that we currently aren't accounting for anywhere? Because I do, I mean, that's its own equity issue, right? It's like, we're gonna raise it to five on the cars we know about, and we're gonna continue to ignore the cars that aren't paying the personal property tax, or, or going through it.
It's a mandate, pure and simple. I need to do, it needs to be done. Hundred percent agree.
Other thoughts on the options or levers that Karen and Wyatt talked about?
You know, we are doing work now. We'll provide a bit more structure for this conversation at your next meeting, but if, you know, council does have any other sort of thoughts in terms of kind of lines of service that you think we should be looking at, that'd be helpful for us to see.
I guess, I have two thoughts. One is building off what Erin said about CNI. So it's, for me, it's definitely below the line for this year, but I'd like to see it on the list of, like, consideration of revenue options, along with meals tax, below the line for me this year again. But like, we should know, how much does 1% bring us? Should we need that option next year or the next year, on the list of considerations? And then, going back to Q and A number three, so in terms, the question about, like, should we decrease the tax rate 2.5 cents as proposed? I had asked for comparison of not just tax rates, but what the tax impact is, like, people's bottom line, and benchmarking that across the region. So, I just want us to be really cognizant that even with a 2.5 cent decrease, it's still like a 3% or 4% impact on their tax bill. And so, when people are cost-burdened, like, trying to minimize actually the total tax bill is important to me. And so being able to give them some relief, some kind, is important. And then my third point, I actually have three points, which I say every budget cycle, but we just can't get used to 6% revenue growth. Like, if this is the beginning of the bad years, like, we should exercise discipline now on what that looks like, so that next year is not gonna be that much harder. Because if we only have 2% or 3% revenue growth, going from a 6% budget to a 2% budget, it's gonna be really hard next year. So we might as well start thinking about what those expense levers are now. I know I've said it every year, and clearly it hasn't mattered, but maybe this is the year.
Can I say? No, it has mattered, and I think it's really important to think that way, that, like, what is gonna happen next year? And we just, we don't know, but the trend doesn't look great. But the other piece is, is we're talking about people who are cost-burdened, and we all know what's going on in the region, and we're all really concerned for our neighbors, and we've all heard stories of a family with two State Department parents, and they both have lost their jobs, or, or things like that, right? I mean, all of us have neighbors and friends who this has happened to. But there's also a considerable number of people in Falls Church that are not cost-burdened by what's going on. So, the percent, so, we're not, it's not that we're all cost-burdened. There's a percentage of the people in Falls Church that really are right now, but there's another percentage that are not at all. So I, so, while I feel great compassion for people who are, and want to make sure we're looking after them, I don't want to build our whole plan on the people who are burdened versus the people who are not, if that makes sense. And that sounds way less compassionate than I am, but...
Okay. Other thoughts? Okay. Sounds like we're gonna talk more next week, so. I think that's it for official items. Do you want us to talk about consent? We already talked about fire services, Wyatt. We don't have, we don't need to talk about fire services again on the agenda, because that's listed as consent, do we? I'm asking you. Okay. It's 11:45, so I'm guessing people don't want to go through schedule, or do you have other?
No, I have, I have a whole other category I'd like to talk about on budget, because we received a letter from FC CAN, let's see, April 9th, and we discussed it also at the ESC last week extensively. You all have a copy of it. There are approximately 12 requests, and I would like them to be a part of, official part of the Q and A for the budget. I don't know if you've seen it, Kieran, but I can certainly make sure that you have a copy of it, because we've spent a tremendous amount of time on our Energy Action Plan, community and government energy action plans. And if we talk about where we fund our priorities, we have not funded much in the way of our priorities, at least what we've said in terms of our action items there. And there are a lot of questions specific to things we can do that don't cost a lot of money, and some things that do require money. And so there are several things that I want to, I would like all of them answered in the Q and A, but a couple of things I just want to bring up specifically are talking about the Aurora House solar project, again, because it is one of those that you spend money on. There's a return on investment that pays for itself over time, but it is tied to tax credits for solar, which we know will likely be going by the wayside. There's also discussion, I would like to discuss, if we do change something to car tax, we've talked about having some kind of incentive for electric vehicles, for people who purchase new electric vehicles moving forward. And one way to do that is through an increase in personal property, you know, in the car tax, that would fund some type of incentive moving forward. And that's the number 238, that was, we have like 238 registered EVs currently. So even if you doubled it, that's a nominal dollar amount. There's a request about the Neighborhood Tree Program. I don't remember what we spent on that before, but that also ties into our, our conversations of tree canopy percentage, if we, if we look at spending money on that. And then there are other questions about our plans, specific questions about the energy audit programs and the shifting of dollars, and then just personnel, who is going to be responsible for ensuring that we are keeping on track of our GOE, their stats on what we have, GOE BNC plans, because there's stats, and we're, we're not doing so hot, to start off with. I talked with the school board chair today. There are questions about how we coordinate with the FCCPS on their capital purchases, and through a lens of sustainability. So we've talked about how to add to that. I won't go through all of them, but there are, I would like to have them all addressed as budget questions, because they come from a large group of sustainability-focused community members. So, I can follow up on that next Monday, and make sure that you have these here, and to the extent we can answer some of them, I'm sure Kirk can help answer some of them as well. We talked about some last week at the ESC, and I'm sure everybody's really tired and doesn't want to hear about this, but we have had a couple of big meetings this week. Last ESC and CDA both met in the past week. One takeaway from the ESC is that there's a new change in LEED programming. There's, the next update is going to be released in April, which we should be incorporating into any special exception requests that come through. And I know we have one we're discussing, or is calendared, so I want to make sure that hits that discussion as well. And then just a quick update on the CDA. There's a, Hoffman did a whole update on everything that's happening at West Falls. We can share with everybody. You guys can look at it sometime that's not midnight on a Monday night. But suffice it to say, we approved the role assessments, the 129, 126 condos that are coming online should start closing in June. Those will all hit the tax assessment rules for this year's billing cycle. And Mr. Snyder confirmed, and we, or we all confirmed with our municipal bond advisor and our attorneys on the CDA, just that we're in full compliance. And despite everything that's happening in the economy, there's no additional legal or financial liability to the city based upon the CDA agreement. So, just wanted to confirm that for everybody. In case that's what you're laying away worrying about at night, you can take that off your worry list. And then the rest of these things I can bring up on Wednesday or next Monday.
Can I say a question about the, the condos that are coming online? Are they included in the budget planning for this next year? And there's also budget question 17, about collective bargaining agreements, that said it would be, we would get a presentation at the April 21st work session?
Yeah, well, that's happening next.
That'll be, that's, that's put off, okay, okay.
Great, I think we're adjourned then. Cindy and Sally, can I just catch you briefly about the whole planning commission, site plan thing, because I raised it actually, with a few other electeds. So the good news, everyone was surprised.
I did, I went back through the BMO materials, and I saw it, and then I'm curious for Monday day, but, boy, it's, you can get.
We didn't discuss it at all.